Okay, very good. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Appreciate you all being here. This is a regular meeting of the Grantsville City Council. For the record, today's date is November 5th, 2025, and time is 7:00 PM. This meeting is being held in the Grantsville City offices located at 429 East Main Street, Grantsville, Utah, and on Zoom. I'm Mayor Neil Kretschlow and all five council members are present. I'd like to ask Les if he'll help us lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you all please raise your eyes, face the flag? When the command is given, please render the proper salute. Please hand arms. Please follow me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do, seated. Thanks, Les. Appreciate you. I'd like to congratulate all those who made it through the beating of the election. And we sure appreciate the effort. It's not an easy thing to put your name out there. It's hard. And you're kind of got targets on your back every time you move, so. Okay, our first agenda item is public comment. Anybody that would like to have any public comments? You have three minutes. Tell us who you are and...
Gary Pinkham. Yep, two items I want to talk about this evening. One is the proposed MDA that's before you. Last night, it become apparent that that draft of that thing was far from being complete. The representative for the developer that presented that in favor and for them indicated that there were, I think, about a half a dozen significant items that have yet to be addressed and or worked out between they and the city. And that means the proposed amendment or MDA is totally incomplete. Additionally, it was poorly written that, I'm not sure what some of the terms even meant for what they were doing. And there were also some timing issues in there that really concerned me. And I would ask that you guys look very closely at that. I don't think the city should be even considering, let alone passing a legal document that is not finished and complete and correctly drafted for your consideration. The second item is on project that was before the planning commission about a month ago. And that is the... What do they call it?
Falcon Ridge.
Yeah, Falcon Ridge, Falcon whatever, landing.
Falcon Landing.
That project, I looked at the documents that were considered in the packet or included in the packet. Number one, there was nothing in that packet that indicated they're going to be subdividing lots. It did not show that on the drawings. It did not say that in the narrative. That only came up when I took the time to read the minutes that were drafted for the commission to approve last night. It appears that they are proposing to take seven existing lots that are compliant with the R-112 code, R-112 zone that it's in. And they're planning on cutting those in half to accommodate those twin homes. That would create fourteen non-compliant lots, which is a violation of city ordinance, city code. It would be illegal. Some of them...
Thanks, Gary. There's your three minutes. Appreciate you. Or done. You've used your three minutes.
Pardon me?
You've used your three minutes.
For the first item or the second item?
For public comment.
All right.
You had three minutes.
The bottom line is, that proposal was illegal and non-compliant on about a dozen factors.
Okay, understood. Anyone else with public comment? You have three minutes.
Won't speak much on the MDA. Did enough of that talking last night. That should be tabled unless the attorney spent all the last 24 hours fixing that monstrosity of a mess. Council members, I'm urging you tonight to vote no on Agenda Item Number Nine, the Master Water Service Agreement for Desertate Development. Because what is being sold to this city as help is nothing more than manipulation. The developer keeps claiming that they are helping the city so we don't lose our water shares. That sounds noble, but it is flat-out misleading. It is a scare tactic designed to pressure the council into approving a deal that benefits them and not the people of Grantsville. Here's the truth. Yes, the municipal water shares can expire after long periods of non-use. But under Utah law, city can protect those shares through a non-use application with the state engineer. That process legally preserves our rights as long as we have reasonable cause and the law specifically lists reasons like planning for future growth, financial constraints, or building infrastructure. So let's be clear, Grantsville is not in danger of losing its water rights. We don't need a developer to save us. We can protect our own water legally and responsibly without selling our future to a private company. This agreement is not about protecting water. It's about transferring control of it. Over 5,000 water shares would be tied to this development, one of the largest commitments in our city's history. Yet there is no verified proof that we have the capacity to deliver that water. No engineering study, no hydrology report, no infrastructure plan, nothing. We're being told to trust the developer's word. That's not leadership. That's surrender. And once this agreement is approved, it is permanent. The developer's rights become vested. Future councils will not be able to change it, even if we face drought, even if our wells drop, even if new residents are left without enough supply. This deal will stand. This means that council's votes tonight has consequences that will last for generations. And financially, it's just as reckless. There's no fee schedule, no cost breakdown, and no guarantee that the city won't end up subsidizing this development at the expense of current residents. How can anyone call that good government? Let's call this what it is. It's a rush developer-driven deal built on fear instead of facts. They want us to believe that if we don't act now, we'll lose our water. But the only thing we'll lose if we approve this control is our, is control of our future. Water is the lifeblood of Grantsville. Once committed, it's gone, and you can't undo it with another vote. You can't get it back with another resolution. Council members, this is the kind of decision people remember. Years from now, when the city is struggling with shortages or costs spiral out of control, the residents will look back at this moment and they will ask who protected their water or who sold it off. You have one chance to make the right choice. Don't give in to scare tactics. Don't sign away our control. Don't let outside interests dictate Grantsville's future. Vote no on this agreement. Stand with the people who live here, who pay the bills here, and who depend on you to protect their future.
Okay. Anybody else public comment? Anything online? Seeing none, we'll close that item of business. Okay, some reaction items. Just look at the minutes in the October 22nd meeting.
Mayor, I make a motion that we move to approve the minutes from 1020 to 2025 regular meeting address.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Bless you. Okay, item B, approve of the bills.
I had one question about the, it was the Morgan Asphalt Bill. Just curious what that was specifically for. What road work was that, was that, was that for? Do you want to know?
At the end of the 2025 street projects, Christine.
What was the amount?
Forty, it was forty-five or forty-seven thousand dollars. Don't have it right in front of me. Have to look it up.
That might be the retentionage for the road project.
Is that Worthington? She moved that, you guys.
What's the description on it?
Should have waited five seconds when I brought it up.
Class C roads.
There it is, right there.
That would be the road maintenance then.
Okay, six. Yeah, it says maintenance and repairs.
Just curious specifically what it was for. That was all.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bills as presented.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good. Okay, we're going to have item three, but then in the next item, we're going to move 10. Need a motion to move 10 up to follow number three. So let's go through three first. Consideration of Resolution 2025-82, approving a budget reallocation and the creation of select new positions. Sher, you got this?
I got this. Can you switch it to me, Jana? And so this is the first time that I've done a budget reallocation like this since I've been here. The great thing about this and what Michael's trying to do is he's trying to make the best uses of the resources we have. We're not adding to the budget. He looked at the budget. He looked at the departments. He brought people together to talk and thought, how can we use what we have so that it helps everyone? So the difference between a budget reallocation and a budget amendment is a budget amendment, you're adding funds or you're moving them from one department to another. In this case, we're just reallocating where it goes. But because we're creating new positions that the council didn't know about, that's why we're bringing it to you. We want your feedback. We want to make sure that you agree with what's going on and you have a chance to give feedback and also that it's transparent. So what Michael's focusing on is kind of looking at a long-term growth. We're growing rapidly as a city. He's got different views. He's got different ideas that we haven't thought of before. He wants us to become more self-sufficient, rely less on contractors. He wants us to be efficient. He's trying to get, and he is bringing departments together and getting us to share resources, which is great. So with this reallocation of resources, the funded positions are a part-time police clerk to full-time, a part-time victim's advocate to full-time, a part-time code enforcement employee, a part-time mechanic, a road supervisor, and a water maintenance lead. And well, one at a time, we'll have the directors kind of come up and tell you how this, these positions will help their department.
Robert, are you in here?
Nope.
So we started this with attrition. So I had a officer resign and then I have deficiencies across the police department. One I've talked to you guys about multiple times is victim advocacy. And then records clerk, our civilian staff. So it would take a little while to hire an officer and we could use that, these funds to bring in that records clerk full-time, bring a victim advocate full-time. That would solve a deficiency in the civilian staff for at least a couple of years, in my opinion, based on the five-year plan. So I do like that. And then we have moved to, we have an officer that does the outfitting, police vehicle outfitting, lights, sirens, stuff like that. And we can get the mechanic and train the mechanic with this officer and that would also free up the officer to quality control, help the mechanic out, become more self-sufficient. And I think this is a good move now for our police department and for the city. Just makes us more efficient.
Upfitting the vehicles ourselves gives us a significant cost savings.
And repairs as well. I mean, the officer has a light, you know, brake or equipment brake. They pulled into the shop right now. Sergeant Euler fixes it. We don't have to rent it in Salt Lake. If we can have that with a mechanic and train them and train them right, that'd be good. Anything else on space in there? Any questions, council?
Yeah, I have a question. The victim advocates position, if I remember right, that position right now is subsidized through grants, right?
Yeah, so we have two positions that are, that are Volca-funded. One, Delia's position is about 53% funded fringe and salary through Volca. We have the part-time position that we just received this year and it's a two-year cycle. And that is 100% funded at 1773 an hour. So we'll have about $18,000 a year that will be used just to continue to fund that on top of the, what we pull off, the officer position that we've been holding. So we will still have the funds, but we are using the funds to help supplement, not supplant, the...
So we'll, we'll move one part-time employee to full-time and we'll continue to keep the part-time, the other part-time employee?
No, two.
No, two. So I have a records clerk, Natalie. That she is a part-time records clerk and we're becoming busy there. So that will be a full-time position. And then the victim advocate will also be a full-time position.
Because Delia is already full-time, right?
Delia is full-time. And I think that with the five-year plan, and I'll redo that this year, go through it again on the annual basis. But it kind of aligns. I think it gives us a couple-year buffer in that civilian staff. So outside of animal control. But the code enforcement officer will also help with that, which would go to the community development. So that'll free up some staff.
But the difference in wages and benefits that you would pay an officer compared to the clerks and victims advocate, you're actually saving money. And...
And what, by doing it this way? They will be a little bit under market right now. And we'll have to maybe look at that in July and present that to see if council, if that's a market move, we need to, we need to adjust. But for now, we'll get the positions.
This is really kind of a lateral move for us. We already have a code enforcement officer that works with the PD. This would be something that would then be moved over to our department. It's for a couple of good reasons. I think having a police officer show up at your home for a weeds violation is often considered to be a little more intense than we want to be with this kind of a position. And so it helps kind of soften the blow there just a little bit. If, if the code enforcement officer feels the need for a uniformed officer to come with on a particular concern, obviously that will always be something that's available. But for the most part, code enforcement is best handled when it's more of an informational kind of a situation to say, we noticed that you're in violation. Here's some options for you to cure the violation as opposed to show up with a uniformed officer kind of a situation. So we feel like that's a good move and hope you guys will support that. Great.
So Chief Sager just said if we upfit our own vehicles, that will save the city. But we also need to give our mechanic help to do that as well as help maintain every piece of equipment in the city. So not just police, but fire and all the public works. And that's all your park equipment as well, mowers, et cetera. It's just too much for one right now.
And in this reallocation, we're taking that wage out of all of the departments that have vehicles. So there's a portion that's coming from fire, a portion that comes from police. In the end, we'll show you that the mechanic really supports multiple departments.
Sheri, what program will you use to keep track of the hours and which department they're working for?
In pay loss, do we do it by percentages? And right now, it's estimated percentages. Every time we do a new budget, we look at the percentages for all the positions and we evaluate, does this still make sense? Do we need to change it? So right now, it's just an estimate based off of kind of how many vehicles they have.
So as for the road supervisor, in the past, the public works department has not had somebody that specializes more in roads. All of our major road maintenance has gone out to contract. So we're hoping to hire someone that has a little more experience with perhaps chip sealing, crack sealing, slurry, seal coat, these types of things initially, that we can do those types of maintenance in the city without contracting that out. Any large repair, right now, we don't have the equipment. We'd still have to contract out. But this would make it so we could stretch our dollar further by hiring someone that has that knowledge and can help lead our road department with that. And then the next position, right now, I only have my main water operator and then a meter specialist and another operator. And so my road department is mainly fixing all the water leaks we have. This way, by having a water maintenance lead, not only would they be a water operator, but they'd be the one in control of fixing all these water lines instead of the road department. That way, the road department would come behind and fix the patches. But we would move the repair of the waters primarily to the water department.
Do you have any questions on those positions?
How many water leaks you've had this week?
Shh.
How many last week?
We had three last week. I haven't had any this week. But we did two asphalt patches this week so far. Two large asphalt patches.
Do we have those in-house?
We did them. We did them this time, in-house.
Do we have equipment for small road repairs?
Yes.
We already have that.
For small patches, yes, we do that. But I, and yes, we would need more equipment to do like a chip seal, a slurry seal, even crack sealing. We would need more equipment.
I vaguely remember us offloading a piece of equipment not that long ago. What it had to do with the zipper.
It was a zipper. We did.
We're not going to need that back, are we? Well, obviously, we...
It depends to what level we do our roads.
And this is a position that will grow over time. This is part of like a long-range vision. It will take time to build up a roads crew to be able to get that type of equipment. This is an overnight. We're going to be doing our own roads tomorrow thing. So this is part of what Michael's seen in the city he's worked at before. We can talk about that more, Michael, if you want.
Absolutely. So it's really about getting away because we wanted to maintain our roads and get newer roads here with the road traffic plan. So having the people and the staff on hand that actually know how to build those roads is pivotal. And so having this position is going to help us get there. And so the equipment, we can look at renting that, get intergovernment agreements with the other sister cities around us to utilize their equipment if we need to. And so we're going to walk down all those paths to try and utilize that while we get the ability to do that. Because right now, we're spending quite a bit of money on contracting out these services. And I feel like we can save more money by bringing that in-house and then utilizing the funds there for actually just maintaining the road instead of having the contractor take that cut out of those portions here. And so I think with the long-term planning of all the different builds out and the roads we're going to have to maintain and putting that slurry, having that here is going to benefit us in the long run.
Michael, what's the cost difference approximately from doing a job in-house versus contracting it out? What is the percentage higher that you would estimate that might be?
It's probably going to really just be the contractor's fees that they would charge on that project. And those range from 10 to 30% of the project itself. And so again, the cost savings is you're going to have someone on salary to do that quite quickly. And then you have the response time. You don't have to pay the mobilization fees as well because you're already there and you're the ones mobilizing to those locations. So it's tough to quantify that all, but realistically, the range would be the mobilization fees and the cost of the contract you would take for the, his fees as well as the overcharge of the equipments or the product that they purchase.
Thank you.
Well, the big question is how can we do all those positions with the budget we have? So on this slide, I kind of got it summarized. So under the total, it kind of shows you whether it's a reduction, whether it's an increase. The wage amounts, those do have their benefits, retirement and healthcare. So although they look large, they aren't that big. And then as you go over on the right, you can see which departments. So for example, the mechanic position, it's partially coming out of fire, the police department, streets, community development, inspection, water and sewer. So one of the big things I want you to see is the road supervisor. That's going to be coming out of class C road money right here. So it will reduce the amount you have available for projects. On the other side, you will have, hopefully, the projects will come in at a lower cost. We're going to change the way that we're putting them out for procurement, which will help quite a bit. And also having someone that can evaluate which roads need to be done, at which time will save us money also. So in the long run, we believe that you will get more roads done with the money that you do have. What else do we have? Well, pretty much sums it up. There's some with just different reduction in what was budgeted versus actual personnel changes. We did take a vehicle out of the budget. And so we purchased, or we're leasing three, we're doing a lease purchase agreement tonight for three, and we purchased one that we had in the budget to purchase two. So that is a reduction. But overall, if you look at the total, even though we're making all these changes, there's still a savings in the overall budget. Do you have, it's a lot. I know it's a lot to kind of go through. Do you have any questions?
No, I appreciate you going through the, this portion specifically. That was my primary concern is what, you know, what, how that impacts our current and really more importantly, our future budgets. Anytime you add personnel, it's, you know, it's, it's a cost that's there. I do know from a staff standpoint, I believe we're, we're understaffed in several areas currently. So I appreciate you putting this together so we can visualize it.
The budget is tighter than it's ever been, but also our needs are also tighter than they've ever been also, so.
I just want to, like, I'm sure you've had conversations on quality of work. Do we, is our, do we feel like the quality of work will be better, us doing it ourselves?
For the roads?
Yeah.
Absolutely. We're going to have to find the right person to do that.
That's the key.
And so I, again, I won't, we're going to definitely be involved in that, making sure that we go out until we get the right person.
I think that's critical. That's the exact thought I had. If we hire...
I think that's critical. That's the exact thought I had. If we spot higher someone, it's no skill or experience.
It doesn't do any good for us.
That's part of why we have the higher wage range on there is because to make this work and happen, right, we've got to have somebody with experience.
The the row that I have just questions on is just how you came up with the road project budget reduction of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. I just curious behind the map behind that.
Well, that's we wanted to keep the budget neutral on it. And so right there, you can see we had an increase by we changed allocations and some of the road crew. Five percent was moved to Class C to make this happen. And then the wage for the supervisor, but to keep it neutral, we're going to reduce the amount that we're doing for our project next year. So the way that we've been doing our procurement for our roads, the way you want to change it, we think it'll bring better competition between the contractors. And so even though we'll have less money for the project, we think our dollars going to stretch further. So I think it'll make a big difference.
Just you you said that again. So how do you figure it is going to create better competition between the contractors?
The way we had, no, the way we have, I'm glad you asked. A lot of times with road projects, big projects like that, you should do lowest price ones, right? Right now, we're scoring on qualifications. And we also, our bidding package was so big that a lot of people didn't put in. I think we had what one company? Did we have two or just one company?
We had three, but two of them combined, but we had three.
Yeah. So before we would have more competition, before we changed it to the way it is, the bidding package, it wasn't a couple hundred pages. It was a lot. We're doing like actual plans for the reconstruction years before. We didn't actually do plans for reconstruction. We would have it a lot smaller. We want this road done. You know, we still give the dimensions, but we wouldn't actually have engineered plans for it. I'm not an expert on roads by any means. So like, I trust Michael and his experience because he has worked for a public works department before. But yeah, Michael, if you have anything to input or anything that I said wrong, please correct me because I'm not an expert in roads.
If there's any other questions on that.
As we've complicated the bidding process for the roads, we've had less and less people put in every year. We used to have more companies. We used to do they used to be for us. But I think the key is is when you don't do those qualifications, you need to make sure your inspectors are watching them, really watching the project. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So we're also, we've been doing other things that besides just adding positions that we want to let you know, we've been value engineering our projects. We've been looking at our scenic slopes project. We've been looking at the Veterans Park project. We moved to in-house engineering. That's going to give us cost savings. Michael found out that there was a state contract gas co-op in town. I didn't know it existed, but we've calculated our savings by moving to that. And that's nine to twenty thousand dollars per year in estimated savings, which will be huge. I told you before, Michael's questioning everything that comes past his hands. And there was an environmental study that he stopped us and said, this shouldn't cost so much. We went out, we got quite a few more companies to give us a price and we saved over twenty-five thousand dollars just by having him give us that feedback. We've been getting grants. Michael is questioning every P O. He's looking at it. And then we've also had some savings on status. So I just wanted to let you know, we are aware of the budget site. We're doing the most that we can to make sure we're stretching those dollars because it does matter. No, I guess. Do you have any questions? It's it's a lot. I haven't. I've been here a whole time, a long time, and I haven't done a budget reallocation like this, but it's a good thing to look at what we have and ask ourselves, how can we stretch it further?
Thanks, Sherry. More questions? Discussion? Make a motion. We approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-two approving the budget reallocations and the creation of select new positions as presented.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I need to to move item ten now. To this one.
Mayor, I make a motion that we move agenda item number ten to to right now after item number three.
I'll second that.
Motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Item ten is consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-nine approving a lease agreement for the acquisition of equipment. Who's going to do this one? Sherry, you can do this one again?
So this is something we've done in previous years. Like I mentioned earlier, we had three vehicles that were doing this lease purchase agreement with Zion's bank on. These are vehicles that are patrol vehicles. So quite a few years ago, we've purchased all of our vehicles. And we had a police chief that wanted us to start leasing them. We slowly converted. So everything was leased. And Robert would like to eventually go back the other way. He doesn't want to pay interest, but once we have so many leased, it's hard to all of a sudden go back to having them all purchased. It's a big cost. So we will slowly try to transition back to having more that are just purchased. The one thing about patrol vehicles is they get a lot of miles on them. They get a lot of use. A lot of times, they're not vehicles that we want to keep long term. So we have been doing our patrol vehicles this way. And then the vehicles that we plan on keeping longer term while you purchase outright. So this will be a four point five six percent interest rate. And we'll have one, two, three, four, five, five years of payments on them. And then, you know, Robert will come up with a plan with your new finance director and plan to transition it however you see best moving forward.
How long do we usually hold on to the cars?
It depends on the type of vehicles, the detectives and the supervisory stuff we can keep longer. But the patrol vehicles, a lot of times by the time this agreement's done, they're ready to be turned back in.
So we we at one point in in Grantsville, we would buy one car.
Every year.
So they'll be fourteen years old when the when the next guy got a new car. And they they were just wrecks basically and not safe. And and so we started leasing them. And so now this is starting to you know, Chief Sager has really got monitoring things and if they're getting old and need to be changed.
Well, he cares a lot about his budget. He's very cost effective. These were included in the budget. They are ones that we have already purchased. And then Zion's bank reimburses us for them. So to get that money back, to keep on the lease, this needs to be passed. Otherwise, you just purchased the vehicles. So. Yeah. Yeah. And there is a cost for upfitting the vehicles like Robert mentioned before. And so that is why when we do have a vehicle like a detective vehicle that we want to keep long term, it does make more sense to purchase it and not moving them out. So like a combination of the two is actually working right now. Robert, do you have some input and kind of?
The combination is good. Administration and investigation vehicles do not need to be replaced every three to five years. They could, they can they can be driven a lot less and last a lot longer. But the patrol vehicles usually have a three-year to a five-year turnaround. The lease we were doing before the contract was five years and we had to keep them. And we got stuck with the maintenance. This this contract, if we can sell them at any time and we we get to repay off what we owe, but we can keep the rest. And the other ones that we own, now we can auction them and put the money back into the fleet.
And we can also keep it at the end. If it's a great vehicle, it hasn't had a lot of use, we have the option to keep them too. So it's really a nice way to kind of manage our cash flow and keeping our vehicles good at the same time.
You have to manage the vehicles. You got to keep track of the fleet. There will be lemons and we just have to get rid of them.
One's one extreme to this other. And now we're trying to get it back in between. You know, I swear, it just makes sense.
All right. Are we ready for a motion?
Sure.
I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-nine approving a lease agreement for the acquisition of equipment.
And the motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries.
Thanks.
Thanks for making a motion to move up. Appreciate you sharing. You ready? This will be Sherry's last council meeting that she has to attend us. We sure appreciate everything that you've done.
Thanks.
That's very much. You have been amazing. Thank you so much.
My God.
Okay, well, made me cry already. So just.
Thank you, Sherry. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to item number four. Consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-eight appointing Vicky Matthews and Sydney Rasher to the Grantsville Historic Preservation Committee. Where's Sydney at? Yeah, stand up quick. Everybody can see Sydney. She's got the coolest kids, just so you know. And they were looking for somebody young so they can know how to do the computers. Anyway, thanks for doing that. Thanks for doing that.
No, well, I'm very excited. I've lived in Grantsville my whole life. I am so privileged to own a historic home. And I'm just really excited to be able to share the the amazing history that Grantsville has through their historic buildings and excited to help those that have those buildings too, because it is quite a learning curve. And I'm excited to to help other people with that too. But yeah.
The maintenance never quits.
Never.
Projects.
Yep.
Need a motion, you guys. Thanks, Sydney.
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty dash twenty twenty-five dash seventy-eight appointing Vicky Matthews and Sydney Rasher to the Grantsville Historic Preservation Commission.
Motion is second is going. Motion a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You're stuck.
Thank you for being willing to serve.
Okay, we're going to move to item number five, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-five approving a preliminary plat amendment for Harvest Meadow subdivision to reduce the front yard setback requirement from forty to thirty feet. Already went through planning and zoning?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm here. If you have any questions, I think this one's pretty straightforward.
I guess my question is why?
The code changed, I guess, in the interim and it was reduced from forty feet to thirty feet. And they're just requesting compliance with the existing code.
So when they had their original plot, it was for a forty-foot setback. We've since changed it to thirty. So they're just wanting the current.
Right. That's correct. Yep.
Is there any questions for Mr. Kobe?
These are half acre lots?
Yeah, they're 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 the big ones.
The big ones.
All half acre.
Did we on the half acre lots, did we change?
Yeah, we changed to thirty.
But the bigger ones we left?
To thirty. The ones larger than half acre, yes.
But if you were under half acre, it was twenty-five.
There was there was talk of changing these half acres to twenty-five.
That's what I'm thinking.
We adjusted and made sure that was thirty.
Yeah, that's that's the conversation I was trying to recall. Thank you. I'm like, I thought we didn't change this.
What is the history of the that size of lot specifically? At some point, it's been thirty-five, I believe, and then forty and then back to thirty. So I guess the only question I had is we've had a little bit of movement there. Trying to find a number that sounds right or feels right or looks right. And I'm just speaking generally here. So I you large, the larger the lot, the the more appropriate I feel it is to place the home further back into that lot, in my opinion. But I I that's my opinion. But yeah, I I guess the question I have is if we've had a lot of movement there. I know we've landed on thirty. The question I have is just thirty, the right, is that the right number, I guess. So it's more of a general question.
Shelby, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, Shelby with planning and zoning, the planning and zoning administrator for those in the public that don't know. But Jake, not to make your question not valid, but applicable to these lots, they are very long and skinny. Specifically, these corner lots that have two front yards and two side yards. You can see the four corner lots, it would be almost impossible to actually build anything on those four corner lots. As you kind of look at this diagram. And so that's really where this front yard setback is applicable with these lots. Now, in planning commission, we did have numerous discussions about should the front yard setback be twenty-five feet? Should it be thirty? You know, should it remain at forty feet? Or or where is that comfortable space? And so that's where it was decided not to amend the front yard setbacks in chapter fifteen for the R one twenty-one zoning and leave it at thirty feet instead of the twenty-five feet that was initially proposed. But there were lots of discussions of what is it really affecting? Is it helping out with water wise and promoting that? Are we wanting larger backyards and smaller front yards? And so that's kind of where that discussion went when we did amend the code.
Yeah, and I I understand that. I think sometimes where I see in the concern I have is if we push homes closer to the roadways in roadways where it doesn't, I mean, in this situation where we've got where we've got cul-de-sacs and roads that don't carry through, if we, you know, my my concern is, you know, having a home at thirty, twenty-five feet on a roadway doesn't always make sense.
Off the Quirk Street?
Yes.
Yeah.
In certain situations. So you could have vehicles trapping at a higher rate of speed. So that was the only, yeah, so it was a general comment. So thank you for the discussion.
Okay, any more discussion? Any more motions? So I make a motion. We approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-five approving the preliminary plat amendment for Harvest Meadow subdivisions to reuse the front yard setback requirements from forty feet to thirty feet. A motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion in the second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Need a roll call vote? Councilman Williams?
In favor, aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you get the ayes and nays? Okay. Very good. Thank you. And item number six, consideration of ordinance. item number six, consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight approving the first amendment to Harvest Meadows master development agreement. Let's just kind of takes care of that, right? Bill, Shelby, you guys want to address this?
Yeah, the first amendment just solidifies the approval of the preliminary plat. As you can see, it outlines that this is the first amendment to this development agreement and states what was approved in the prior motion.
Where's got that? Yes, sir.
I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight approving the first amendment to Harvest Meadows master development agreement.
Kind of motion, is there a second?
Aye. Me, sorry, second, I'm still reading the words on this, my bad.
Got a motion, a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, item number seven, consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty approving the amendment of the governing documents for Deseret Public Infrastructure District numbers one through sixteen. Sheldon's got this one.
Good afternoon, evening, so this is just amending our governing docs, and there's just one change in it that the original document, do we have it up there? Do we have the actual governing document we can pull up? That's just a formatting change, right, yeah, right there. So this is the only, other than the formatting was a little messed up. So originally, it said that all assessments imposed by any district on a parcel zone for residential uses shall be payable before the time a building permit is issued with respect to such parcel. That was really just an error when we created these governing docs in our district. It really needs to read that it shall be payable at or before the parcel is conveyed to a residential homeowner. And that just makes a big financial difference on the payoff of that. There's no need to pay it off before a homeowner takes it. So in talking with your attorneys, the only, the only comment they had is they wanted to define residential homeowner, and I don't know if that made it into anything you have. So if it hasn't, I would propose if you approve this, that you would add the language. Residential homeowner means the owner of a residential property that is approved for occupancy as a residence, whether such property is made available for lease or rent, or as an owner occupied residential property. And so the intent of this provision still stands that the assessment should not be passed on to the homeowner. It's still being paid off before the homeowner takes over the parcel.
I thought that it was added, like it says residential homeowner means the owner of a residential property intended for owner occupation.
That's great, if it's been added. Yep.
Yeah, it's in there, page five.
Hey, counsel. Yeah, Jay Springer, Land Use Counsel, I, I drafted that, reviewed that with Tyson as well. We did want to make sure that that intent was carried through and, and we are comfortable that it does match that. I understand the financing concerns and, you know, there's a, the building permit to sale can be, can be a, a burden, and this protects the intent as discussed that it is not conveyed on to the homeowner. We also wanted to make sure that it was not passed on to you know, a second homeowner that was buying rental or something, so it's really, you know, baked into that long-term price, regardless of who buys it after the initial developer, which, or which may be a home builder that isn't, you know, directly part of this contract. So we addressed those items in coming up with this solution.
Any more questions?
Was a red line change on page eight? And I, I believe it's, it stated exactly the same, is that just a formatting?
It's just a formatting error.
Okay.
In the original document.
There's a change in E to.
E to G, yeah. Why, they just didn't cross out E and put G, but whatever. That's what I would know.
Thank you.
Questions?
Okay.
Need a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion. Consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-five eighty approving the amendment of the governing documents for Deseret Public Infrastructure District numbers one through sixteen.
So the, the change on the homeowner definition isn't exactly written in here as it was described there. So there's a comma that, so it needs to be and the, the difference is, what we're saying is that whether it is occupied, whether it's intended for owner occupation or for a renter. So I'll, I'll give you the exact language that was, that was written there. So that is, means the home, that means the owner of a residential property that is approved for occupancy as a residence, comma, whether such property is made available for lease or rent, comma, or as an owner occupied residential property.
So I need your motion to include that language.
You could say that's stated by.
Mayor, make a motion in consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-five eighty approving the amendment of the governing documents for Deseret Public Infrastructure District numbers one through sixteen with the comments as stated.
Kind of motion, is there a second?
Hold second.
Motion is second, any more discussion? Seeing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, need to table item eight. Didn't make it through planning and zoning last night. And can't prove it.
I move that we table the consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash forty approving the master development agreement for Deseret Development.
I'll second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Could I ask a question about that particular line item? So that item, agenda number. Are we anticipating that we'll be able to have in planning and zoning a clean draft of that and by the next meeting on the eighteenth? Mr. Attorneys?
We had some discussions with developers council about the MDA that were left a little bit hanging. I can update the city council and the planning commission through its staff probably tomorrow, but the expectation would be we would have a clean draft well in advance of that next one. And if we are going to proceed with the MDA, my goal is to really push that hard over the next few days.
Right, great. Answer the question? Answer the question. Okay, item number nine. Start this out a little bit. I don't think our residents in our city are aware of the fact that your percentage of your property taxes you pay to Grantsville has gone down every year since fifteen, twenty years ago, okay? We have.
Is that last year, maybe?
Not Grantsville's portion. Grantsville's portion has gone down every single year for all of those years. We have the third lowest tax percentage levy in the county. The only two that have lower is Rush Valley and Vernon. Okay, so we've been very frugal as far as our taxes. The other guys who make your taxes go up, the district and the, you know, the, the other portions of that, but Grantsville City has been significantly. We've been taking good care of our, our money and trying to live within our means, so. And so, we're gonna go to item number nine. Consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-one approving the master water service agreement for Deseret Development.
How you doing, Nate? Good evening, Mayor, counsel. It's nice to be back here again, and just for the benefit of the public, I've been retained as outside counsel by the city to help with this agreement. And also, the MDA that was mentioned a few minutes ago also defended Grantsville in litigation since about twenty twenty. So I appreciate the opportunity to serve the city and I'm here to answer any questions. What we're here to talk about tonight is the master water services agreement. And I'm a land use expert and a litigator, but I am not a water attorney. Sometimes you should know what you don't know. So I'm joined by Mr. Jeff Gittens of Smith Hardvickson, and he has been representing the city on water issues for
Fifteen plus years.
Fifteen plus years. And so he's, he's really going to be our expert, kind of providing some of the background. But I thought I would just give a brief introduction before we dive in as to what has happened since we met two weeks ago to talk about this master water services agreement. Over the last two weeks, we've been negotiating aggressive, I wouldn't say aggressively. I think the developer, he would probably say that he cares about Grantsville and he's from here. But it has been a lot of back and forth. We have had half a dozen internal meetings, maybe a half a dozen meetings with opposing counsel. And we pushed back in an effort to bring the agreement that was originally proposed within the parameters of what we thought would be safe and available. But by virtue of that, and some of the language that was changed a little bit over the course of that dialogue, we've still been continuing to fine tune and refine and clarify various provisions. So the packet came out last Friday that had our latest version to the developer because we needed to get that packet out the door on Halloween. And we were all working very hard to get that done. And I think we've had two or three meetings with the developers council since then where we've just been trying to dial down and refine those provisions. So I think our presentation tonight is divided into two parts, really. The first is, we want Mr. Gittens to give an update and a survey of his analysis on what water would be available under the agreement if the city council elected to proceed. And then the second part of this presentation, I'm going to go over some of the red lines and clarifications that we've pushed for in the agreement over the last day or two. And make sure I cover each one of those, make sure the city council understands why we pushed for that or what the discussion was behind it. Because I know the city council cares very much about making sure they have the agreements and they can review everything. It's a shorter agreement, I'd like to walk you through the changes that were made. So with mayor and council's permission, I think we'll proceed along those lines.
All right.
All right, so the, the first question was asked is, is there water available for development in Grantsville? And so, working with staff and city engineers, we look to see inventory, the city's water rights, and look at what's been allocated or you know, set aside for development and what may be available. So the city's water right total, if you add up all the city's water rights, they total ten thousand two hundred eighty-six point eight-five acre feet. Again, that's a big number. There are, in addition to this, this is just the city's water rights, in addition, the city does have some shares in Grantsville Irrigation Company. We're not really dealing with those because they're not part of this agreement, so we're just looking at the, the city's water rights. So we look to see how many of those water rights have been acquired through dedications, water banking, purchases with impact fee fund, so that's five thousand seven hundred seventy-five point three-nine acre feet. So again, that represents a wide swath of, of water that the city has. It's water that has been dedicated for developments that have been built. It's water that's been dedicated for developments that are still being built. It's water that's been banked for future development, and it's water that has been purchased with impact fee or fee in lieu money, where people who, on small developments, rather than giving water, they gave money, then the city used that money to buy water to offset the development. So that is, we view that as committed water. So that's not part of the, the calculation here as far as what may be available. So that leaves the rest, which is water rights that are originally established by the city, which is four thousand five hundred eleven point four-six acre feet. This reflects a maximum value. So there, I'll talk in a minute here, there is a little bit of uncertainty about how much of that could be fully developed. So if we go to the next part, that's where we talk about it. So the city started doing dedications in about nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand, so before, at about that time, the city was using about nine hundred acre feet per year. So again, that forty-five hundred acre feet that the city established, we take off the nine hundred because that was water that was already being used. That leaves us with thirty-six hundred of maximum available water. Again, there's some question, will the city really be able to fully develop all of that water? Again, part of the calculation comes from, this presumes pumping at a certain rate and things like that. And we wanted to build a buffer in to be safe. So rather than saying all thirty-six hundred is available, we did eighty percent of that to give a twenty percent buffer, which gives us the twenty-eight, eighty acre feet of possibly available water. And then there, the city has made some commitments to projects like the Lakeview Business Park, and there's some other ones where the city has made commitments to serve water. And those are, are not all the way quantified because they haven't been all the way built out. The estimate received from, from city and others is somewhere between six hundred and a thousand acre feet of water there.
Can I just interrupt for just?
Yes.
When they set up the, the agreement with Lakeview Business Park, they said, they gave some, some language in there.
Yes.
And it really was vague.
It was.
You know, so we're gonna try to get with them, get that thing nailed down. Michael's gonna work with them, so we know exactly what they're gonna.
Yeah, and that is one thing that came out in this analysis, is that is a bit vague and it may be worthwhile to go back and see if we can nail that down a bit. What, what, basically what it provides for is if there's any large water uses, that the city won't cover that, and they're gonna have to take care of their own water for that or bring water to the city for that, but it's not very well defined of exactly what that is. So defining that would help us give a more solid estimate of what, what this potential allocation is here. So that leaves the somewhere between eighteen eighty and twenty-two eighty of what we call uncommitted water that could be available for development. So that's the math we went through to figure out what could be available for development and serve as the basis for, again, things like the, the Lakeview Business Park, or, or in this case, this development, if that's what the council decides to do.
If you go back to the fifty-seven seventy-five.
Yeah.
Now, a lot of those are I two developments already.
Yes.
But there is a huge portion of that that is just banked with the city, okay? And it's not committed to anything. Those people could sell that water to anybody.
When you say sell the water, so if it's been banked with the city, the city owns the water.
Right.
But they have credits.
They have the credit for it, and they can use those credits and and get the money from a developer at any time.
Yes, those who have banked water could do that. Now, again, a lot of, and I don't have the exact number, but some of that is developers who have banked it for their own development. So rather than having to come in every phase and, and do, they bank the water up front, and then each phase they draw from, use the credits to apply to the, the phase. So yes, they could, but there's probably a lot out of there that people aren't willing to sell because they need it for their own developments they have planned.
But there, there's a lot of folks that are on our. But there, there's a lot of folks that are on our, that have banked their water with us that have not. You know, given it to a commitment to, and it's just sitting there. Okay? Now, we're not going to lose it. They're not going to lose it. Nobody's going to lose it.
Yeah. And again, even though that's the case, we did not factor that in because that's still water that we view will be committed to something else at some point.
For the purposes of the council and maybe those in the audience and online listening, and for the record. Explain to us why an individual who has water rights, a, a citizen. Why would they bank water with the city? Why, why do we have that bank? I, I know the answer, but I would like.
So I, I think the most, again, the most common example where people bank water is a developer who's doing a large development. And wants to get water to the city that, so they get the credits. So again, rather than having to go through a dedication process. Or change application, everything we have to with the state, rather than doing that multiple times. Do it once upfront, you know, give the city the water and then as they do their different phases, they just draw from those credits to apply to the different phases. That's the most classic example. There's been a few cases where developers have, you know, they had water and they. Gave it to the city. Maybe they had fifty acre feet. They gave it to the city. They did the development. Turns out they only needed forty for their development. So they have ten left over and they bank that that they can then use for another development or sell to someone else. So that happens often too. If people have more water than they end up needing for their development. And then, you know, there's some people that have water and for one reason or another, they don't plan to use it and they figure, well, I, I don't want to lose it. We, I know, you know, I may have some developments or, you know, somebody else may have developments and need water. So let's bank this with the city. And the reason why the city's been amenable to doing banks is it gets the water in the city. It's there. It's ready to use. So when developers come in and say, hey, I, I, you know, I want to build twenty houses and I need fifteen acre feet of water. You can rather have them go out, find water, buy it, go through change application, all that. It takes several months. There's water there that they can just go and pay somebody for and it's ready to go.
And then individuals will do that. To help protect the water so they don't have to proof up on, on the water, correct?
I mean, that's one of the reasons why they may do it. If they, if, you know, let's say, you know, I own land and I have water. And for some reason I sell the land, but keep the water and now I don't have a use for it. Well, I can bank it with the city. Now it's with the city and can be used for development.
So individuals, I mean, if they don't utilize their water, they don't proof up on their water, then there is a possibility the state could come in and claw that back, correct?
So yeah, i- in a way. So if someone does not use their water for seven consecutive years, it is subject to forfeiture. It doesn't forfeit automatically. Someone would have to take that person to court and it would be a court that would determine that it hasn't been used and should be taken from them.
And for our purposes, I think there needs to be a little bit of clarification. Can that happen for an entity like Grantsville City?
There are a lot more protections for ent- for municipal entities. Current law as it stands now gives lots of protection. So in two thousand eight, there was a law passed that gave a lot of these protections. You know, I can go through the whole history. Basically, years ago, someone tried to sue a city and say that they weren't using all their water and it should therefore be forfeited. And the legislature looked at that and said, well, we know people are going to keep having kids. We know cities are going to grow. We should make an exception for cities. We need, we want cities to have water for future use, right? So they passed along two thousand eight that gave protection. Those have been tweaked, you know, every now and again. But currently there are protections that protect water for municipalities. Now, can laws change? Can policies change? Yeah. You know, we're seeing lots of pressure on the Great Salt Lake and other things. Is it always possible someone could say, yeah, we don't want to give as much protection anymore? Or they changed the non-use laws. I mean, that's always a possibility, but I don't have my crystal ball to say what that would look like. But it is, it is a possibility. But again, right now, there's lots of protections that would keep that from happening. Again, what we're looking at is not necessarily maybe the city losing it, but there, this, you know, uncommitted water. Could just sit there indefinitely not being used. So maybe it doesn't get lost, but it also doesn't get used. And I always tell people, you know, my job as a water attorney is to, to protect and maximize your water rights. Protect first. Any other questions about the numbers before I let him talk about the contract itself?
Can I just, maybe just for clarification? Because I know I've had this concern and then I've seen it a lot that, you know, that these are, are water rights on paper. But how do we know that, that water actually exists? And I know I've, I've talked to you a little bit about that. Like, could you kind of explain, how does the state determine? You know, because I, I've heard that, that there's a set number for our basin, right?
Yeah. Years ago, the, the state came in and said, okay, you know, no new water right. We're not going to issue any more water rights. Because we're worried if we, if we keep issuing new water rights, then that could cause problems with the groundwater. So they closed the line effectively. But these are all water rights that are already in line, right? We're not creating new water rights. These were water rights that were created decades ago. And in some cases, a hundred plus years ago. So these are water rights that are already in line before the state shut off the line a long time, you know, quite a while ago.
And so, and there's different people and different entities that also own water rights, you know? Like it, it's not just cities, but.
Correct.
There's individuals. And, and so the state's not creating any more rights. But it is for the whole basin. Because I used to have a false notion that it, like Grantsville had a certain amount of water rights. And Tula had a certain amount of water rights, like, but I've, I've learned, I'm just trying to clarify and make sure I understand this correctly. That it's for the whole basin. So like someone could. Buy water rights and, and use them in Tula or in Grantsville or.
Possibly. So the, there is what's called a groundwater management plan here in the Tuila Valley. That has limitations on how you can move water. You know, this is several pages thick, but quick summary. There's the eastern zone, which is over in like Lake Point. They call that the eastern zone. You can't move water into that zone, right? There's. And then outside of that, so you can move water, and this is based on underground flow lines or running basically south to north, but not perfectly. You can move two miles west to east. You can move as far east to west as you want. So water rights in Grantsville, under the current plan, cannot be moved to Tuila because that's more than two miles west east. Water rights in Tuila could be moved to Grantsville because you're going east to west. And that's one of the reasons why water rights in Tuila cost a little more than they do in Grantsville because there's more flexibility. Tuila water rights, you can move, or, or Grantsville water rights, sorry, Tuila water rights, you are, are harder. And sorry, I missed that a lot. Anyway, the point is, there are limitations on where you can move the water. So it's not to say that you can just move water anywhere within the basin. There is that groundwater management plan that delineates how you can move water. But we have more, a little more flexibility here.
And just to clarify, you can say, and, and you said this, this a minute ago, that this is not. And I think it needs to be repeated. This is not irrigation shares. This is culinary water that we're talking, right?
So.
Groundwater.
So not necessarily culinary water, because some of this water, some of the, the city's water rights is used for secondary water.
Right.
Because part of the city gets its water, its secondary water through Grantsville Irrigation Company.
So secondary, it can be culinary or.
Secondary, yeah. Secondary water can be water that's, comes from city's water rights or from shares. It's how the water is used, not necessarily what type of water it is. So that makes sense.
And it's not though, it's not coming from the irrigation. Like that's a whole other entity. I, I just want to clarify.
Because this.
There's been some confusion.
Yeah. Because this, because this area would not be served by Grantsville Irrigation Company, then the shares are really not in play here. It's not really a possibility. So that's why they're not included in, in the analysis.
Because there's no, there's no availability, right, for irrigation to get to this. This property, right?
No.
Okay.
Under the, under Grantsville Irrigation Company's current delivery system, that's my understanding that this water couldn't get up there.
Okay.
Pretty much anything west of West Street. Doesn't have irrigation.
Okay.
Roughly.
All right.
Couple more questions.
Okay.
So you've been our water attorney for fifteen years and I'm sure you represent multiple municipalities.
Yes.
What is your assessment from your professional opinion of Grantsville's situation with water?
Well, boy, I, I better say it's been really good if I've been doing the water rights for fifteen years, but I, I do agree with that, right? I, I get hired all the time by cities who effectively they come in and they say, look. And I just got hired by a city, I won't say who, but this exact situation, right? Our public works director just retired. We thought he knew all about our water rights. Turns out he didn't. Or we didn't know as much as we thought we knew. And now he's gone and we know nothing and we don't know anything about our water rights. We need you to come. And that's where I come in and I have to go through all their water rights and figure out, okay. What do, what do they have? What's the history of them? What, what's their current status? What do we need to clean up? What do we need to fix? Grantsville City's water rights have been very well maintained. So you certainly don't have that problem. If you brought in someone. They would look at them and say, these are all the snuff, right? Especially all the water that's been dedicated over the past fifteen to twenty years. It goes through a very strict process where we analyze the water right from a substantive standpoint to make sure it works. There's a title insurance that is acquired to make sure the city's getting good title to the water as well. The city doesn't take title until we get a change application approved that moves it to city wells for municipal use. So we're not running the risk that we get this water and then we can't actually use it. Like it goes through a very. Strict process before the city actually takes and says, yeah, this is good water that we will bank on. And that makes sense because you're giving. Perpetual commitments to serve people water. You want to make sure the water you're getting is good and doesn't run into risk of having problems or somebody coming back later and saying, hey. Turns out I actually own that water. Here's my deed from before you got it. I should have it. So the city's water rights, I think, are in very good condition. They've been watched over very well by city staff for a long time. It's always been a big thing and an important thing to the city to make sure it has good water.
Okay. Next question. I appreciate that assessment. Next question, just in your professional opinion or with, with the knowledge that you have. How many water shares do we use currently in a given year? What's the?
So how many acre feet do you use? The last note, last number we had from was just over two thousand.
Just over two thousand is what we currently use.
Correct.
So in your assessment, a lot of the water that has been dedicated for some of these projects. We have more water rights essentially than they're dedicated in those projects than what we're currently using.
Right. But not all the water that's, we're viewing as committed is for things that have been built. Again, there's water that's banked. There's water that has been given to the city for developments that are still in process of being built. And so that's why, again, we view that as committed, even though it's not all being currently used yet.
So current usage is around two hundred acre feet.
Two thousand. Yeah.
Thank you. So how many, how many connections do we have? How many connections?
Forty four hundred.
Four thousand six hundred and seventy.
There you go. It's going up. Now, again, there's, there's additional water use under the Grantsville Irrigation Company shares as well, but this is just under the city's water rights. That's how much is being used.
But gives us a good idea.
I just want to say thank you to you. I think this is very helpful and a result. I mean, I. Want to work. I can appreciate the work going into this. So thank you. It answers some questions.
Yeah. All right. I'll let Nate talk about the agreement.
Will you tell me the current connections again? The. Four, four, six, seven, six. Four, six, seven, six. Okay. So the basics for this master water services agreement is in general terms. And Mr. Gittens, Jeff may, may jump up because he was pretty integral in drafting a lot of the water related provisions after we got the initial draft. From the applicant or the, the other contracting party. But in very general terms, what it does is it doesn't sell water. It issues water credits for use. And though that use is specifically tied to this particular development, the Deseret Development Project. Can't be used. We've ensured that there's language in there. It can't just be sold off to somebody to develop across town. These credits are designed to be used only with respect to this development for a specific purpose. And that specific purpose is to satisfy water supply requirements that ordinarily we require people to pay, you know, impact fees. And so they, just like somebody who's banking water with the city, they're acquiring these credits. And then they can later use those credits to satisfy the requirements that other developers would have to, have to do. The second thing it does is it creates a schedule for the sale, for the acquisition of the right to use those water credits. Originally, that schedule was broken into three tranches of seven hundred and thirty three point three three acre feet. Because of our water analysis and because we thought it might be best to be on the conservative side. We pushed back on behalf of the city and said, well, perhaps what we can do is we can have two tranches, each for seven hundred and thirty three point three three. And then let's create an option, an option where if in twenty thirty three, it suddenly becomes clear to us that we understand that. You know, Lakeview's built out. We have a firmer understanding as to how things are, are shaping up in terms of. How development is looking elsewhere, because we can't predict with exact certainty. What's going to go into Lakeview or what other opportunities are presented to the town. Let's set it up as an option. And it establishes the rate for the purchase with an escalating cost per year based on a set interest number. And then the other contractual provisions, as I mentioned, there's one governing use. There's provisions governing signability. Remedies and dispute resolution. So with that in mind, with the general parameters, let me explain to you, if I can. How things have shaken out as we've tried to push and push for provisions that we see as being essential to doing what we can to protect the city. If we could go to the next slide. The first change that was made is a lot of the provisions here reference an MDA. As you all know, the planning commission exercised its judgment and decided to table the MDA last night because they wanted to make sure that they had. A, a very final draft. And so in discussions with the developer since last night, the proposal was made. Let's remove any references to the MDA and let this agreement stand on its own, which we were trying to do anyways, was just to contextualize it. And so we removed it in the recital. It was also referenced in the duplicative, no duplicative fees provision. Which is designed to clarify what, that, that the developer is still going to be obligated to pay certain fees. That are not related to water supply requirements. And we had cross-referenced the MDA with respect to the wastewater plant. And other similar requirements in an MDA. I suspect we'll make sure that if there is an MDA down the line, that's clarified there. To make sure that we have a contractual commitment. But as it stands. We just removed the MDA cross-references here. The, the substance remains the same. If we could go to the next slide. This is, this is a term provision. Originally, it was structured so that this would. There would be a partial termination if the credits were purchased in accordance with the schedule. And a total termination if the MDA was terminated. That was designed to protect the city. And give it flexibility in use with its water credits if the MDA was no longer a viable option or there was an issue down the line. And we've tried to structure provisions in the MDA that clarify when a termination could occur. And this was just a safety valve for both parties. So what we did is we changed the language because we don't have an MDA is. To, in the event the parties elect to enter into an MDA for the development and such MDA is later terminated pursuant to its terms. This agreement will automatically terminate as set forth in the MDA. Could go to the next slide. And then there was an integration clause. This is standard language in a contract that basically says. This is all the contract. You don't get to use evidence about intent or he said, he said, in terms of determining. What the contract means, it's what's in the agreement. And because we had referenced the MDA before, now the agreement. now the agreement, it can stand on its own two legs and we thought it would be appropriate to remove that reference. The other change that was necessitated by circumstances is Mr. Gettens is working with the city engineer to craft and update a 40-year water plan. We were pretty close on that, aren't we, Jeff?
Yeah, we're still working on it.
And because it's not fully complete, just wanted to amend this recital. It's, it's just a recital. It's background in the agreement, but we want the recitals to be accurate. And so we proposed making that change. So this change was designed to deal with the option issue that was proposed and put forward last week in part in response to our meeting two weeks ago. And what it does essentially is just clarifies that the first tranche is only, you know, the first two tranches limited to 1466.66 acre feet, except there's going to be an option. And the option is section 1.1B. We're going to talk a little bit more about that in a second. And then the applicant had requested that, because my understanding is the request was driven, and I'll let Mr. Johnson speak to this, by the fact that sometimes, you know, they're, they're using financing tools to finance this. Sometimes that stuff doesn't come into play as quickly as you wanted. So our city manager and developer negotiated that there could be an extension, but only if the developer pays a one-time fee of $10,000 per extension. So it's a limited extension. It's only 60 days. This is probably.
Can I ask a question about that? Is there any, anything that prevents the extension from being moved forward into perpetuity? Can you, can you continue to purchase a $10,000 extension for, let's say, a year?
If you go back, it says each of the two deadlines may be extended 60 days. I love the question. By, by paying a city a one-time fee of $10,000 per extension, I think we could potentially clarify this. But right now, I think the intent behind it, Mr. Johnson can correct me if I'm wrong, is that it would be one extension per tranche.
That's correct.
And this was language that was added a few hours ago, to be candid. So I wasn't privy to all of those discussions. So thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay. This is option 1B, and I know it looks kind of scary. There's a lot of red text there. I apologize. And it's, it's consistent with the original purpose and spirit of what was in the packet. I want to be clear about that. But we pushed back on provisions that were really designed to, in our view, protect the city and flexibility over the last couple of days. And that's really what this reflects. So if you look through this, what we did, the red language, is we wanted to make sure that if the offer to acquire more water credits was made, that it would be based on what has already been committed to other developers like Lakeview Business Park. And balance it against if we're offering similar deals to other developers exceeding 145 acre feet, that, that essentially we would give the right of first refusal to this developer to, to use these credits only within the Deseret Development. But at the same time, we wanted to build in, and this is about three fourths of down, that the offer to extend would only be representing the number of additional water credits that the city determines is available after factoring in a reasonable buffer. And we also pushed for language that said that the total amount extended through the option credits cannot exceed, Mr. Johnson, I'm sure you're okay with cannot exceed. I don't know why that's.
Says in no event.
In no event shall it exceed. And if the city extends an option, they have to follow the process in the agreement. And they have to exercise it before the expiration of the option period, which is set at 2039. The idea is we recognize the Deseret Development is fairly large, has mixed residential and commercial, 6,997 units. And but we don't want to tie it up forever. It's going to take a time period to develop that, but we didn't want it to be in perpetuity there. So I think we can go to the next slide. This is just the language without all those pesky red lines. And again, the option shall only be extended if the city determines that it holds sufficient water rights to satisfy the additional option credits after accounting for commitments to provide water service pursuant to development agreements or agreements entered into by the city prior to the date of this agreement, including but not limited to the Lakeview Business Park and commitments to provide water service pursuant to development agreements or other agreements entered into by the city after the date of this agreement. Provided, however, that if the city commits more than 145 acre feet of water to other developments after the date of this agreement, then the city is obligated at that point to determine how much additional water the city has available for development and to extended options to developer for option credits representing the number of acre feet of additional water that the city determines is available after factoring in a reasonable buffer. I don't like reading to anyone, but maybe my nieces, maybe my nieces. But I, I thought that going over that might be helpful for the benefit of people online. So thank you for your patience. And then this is again, that language limiting it to 733.33 acre feet and providing that it's subject to the terms of the agreement and must be exercised before the end of 2039. Other minor changes that were made consistent with the spirit of the packet or to protect the city that we, we discovered that there was a minor math error in the original draft when, when we reran the calculations, just in the exercise of diligence reviewing the agreement. Pardon?
Do you want to restart it? It just needs to be restarted. You're tired of us.
I think, I think, Mayor, that, you know, you've spent a lot of time with me over the last part of your tenure.
It's too bad, huh?
Pleasure.
While it's coming up, can you do me a favor, Nate? Explain what's your qualifications and what's your, tell me, tell me your history of how you become an attorney and what you.
Well, fair enough. I mean, how did I decide to go to law school? I majored in history. That like dooms you to go into law school at the end of the day. But originally, when I went to law school, I was a joint, I was, I was going to pursue a joint MPA JD. I had it in my mind that I wanted to enter into public service of some kind. And I found a law firm that did mainly representation of governmental entities. So I could divide between trying to pay off my massive student loans and doing work for governmental entities. And I went to Snow Christiansen, which historically did a lot of work for governmental entities. And after Jody Burnett, who, who is some considers that one of the three godfathers of land use law in Utah, came to the firm, I began working for him and Rob Keller, both land use attorneys and specialized my practice there, starting about seven or eight years ago. And now I do litigation and land use. So.
Argued in front of the Supreme Court and.
I've been up there, the Utah Supreme Court a couple of times. I've argued a case for Grantsville, two cases for Grantsville in front of Utah Court of Appeals. So. Well, are we back up?
Back up here.
It was back up.
Mayor, I don't like talking about myself any more than I like reading. So you really nailed it tonight.
I want, I want everybody to understand that we didn't get some, you know, slacker attorneys, okay?
The grays are coming in. It's really helping with credibility.
Old and wise. We had a lot of, there's been a lot of people with eyes on this with, they're very educated and a lot of expertise. Okay, let's do it before it dies again.
Okay, so we were talking about schedule, the interest schedule. We just corrected typographical slash math error and made sure that that squared with what the, the language said. And we could go to the next slide.
Hang on, we're just dying. Look up here.
So this is, this is a change that we had requested and the developer agreed to. And we, we've discussed this a little bit in the past. And originally, the developer wanted to lock in the amount of the credits based on a set schedule. And that was largely for financing, to secure the financing. But I guess they were able to work out things on their end because what we were pushing for is let's treat this developer like we would every other developer who's got a credit. And generally, we require the use of credits to be calculated by schedules that are in effect at the time of, of the dedication. And we had had some good discussions about this a couple of weeks ago. And had good discussions with Mr. Johnson's counsel, who is very well-heeled in the area. And they were willing to agree to, to, to do what the city wanted to do in terms of making it so it will be at the time of the dedication over time. And if we go to the next slide, what that essentially does, this language, we had had, what's been deleted would have stuck in place and raised questions about adjustment increasing and decreasing and who gets the benefit of that. And what this does now is it just says nothing in this agreement shall preclude the city from amending its water supply requirements as provided by or required by state law or city code. The last change that the original language to this had a provision that basically limited damages. It was important for us to, to limit the city's exposure. While also trying to be fair in the sense that this is a good faith purchaser or, you know, assigme of the city's water credits. And so what this essentially does is if the developer perceives that there's a breach, they can ask the court for specific performance. That's usually better for cities to specific performance instead of damages, quite frankly. Because if a court concludes you should do something and follow the law, you do it. But you get your day in court and both sides get to be heard and then you resolve things. What this does though, and it did before there were changes, is if the developer elects to claim monetary damages, those monetary damages would be limited to essentially a refund of the water fees paid for any water credits that have been acquired by the developer, but not yet dedicated to a phase or portion of the development. And I had proposed, this, this last language is a mix of our language and the developer. I proposed at issue in the uncured breach. It's not everything. It's just you have a sub-developer. They want to use 20 or 30 credits. There's a problem with those and there's a breach. They can't use them. They could seek a refund of those and they would be limited to this. The next part was language that was originally proposed by the developer. It reads plus any interest accrued. Since the, the original, it said, since the time of acquisition, our team, Mr. Gettens and I, in coordination with the city manager and city attorney, pushed back on that and we wanted it tied to the water credits at issue. So there, there would be some interest, but we wanted it to be basically the actual interest that they bore in terms of acquiring these credits. So it would read accrued by a public improvement district tied to the water credits at issue. So it's not all of the interest the public improvement district incurs and paid by that public improvement district since the time of acquisition. That was largely because the language before didn't really have a date of accrual or an interest rate. And this gives us a little bit more certainty and less disputes over that in the future. And then this last sentence was one that we had insisted upon. Upon the payment of a refund, the water credits at issue shall be deemed forfeited by the developer and/or its assinees. And the unused water credits shall be removed from the credit log by the city recorder. So originally, the language didn't really deal with, well, what happens to the credits? So we proposed some language that says, okay, credits come back so that we've resolved that and it's clear on the credit log that we'll have tracking these carefully to make sure there are no problems down the line. Last few changes are really very basic and structural in nature. We had asked for deleting this second sentence. That was Mr. Gettens' input. Nothing in this agreement shall obligate developer assing me to pay a fee not allowed by the laws of the state of Utah. We were worried that would lead to some dispute and it could be addressed through the MDA. And the developer agreed to cut it. Venue and applicable law. We added that the venue could include the United States District Court for the District of Utah. Have to answer your questions about that. But my federal courts class in law school, they often asked, why would you want to be in federal court? The answer was better bathrooms. So but it is true that we have a great federal bench here and I think that that's a good addition there. And if we could go to the next slide, third-party beneficiaries. There was some discussion originally whether to secure the funding, the public improvement district needed to be a party to this contract. We were really concerned that might overcomplicate things, having them be a second party to the agreement. And we found some middle guard ground in terms of making them an intended third-party beneficiary where they would probably be an assigme, maybe. Anyway, we didn't have any concerns with that. We consulted with Mr. Springer about that to make sure that we would be okay on that.
One minor point. Two slides ago, you talked about public improvement districts. If that's meant to be a hid, that we need to make that language consist of the public infrastructure district.
True.
Mr. Johnson is okay with that. We would make that recommendation. So I think that public improvement district came from Mr. Budge and he was on the move. So or maybe, maybe it was me, but I'm not going to throw him under the bus. So if we go on to the next slide, final updates, just little things that we tweaked. We removed the footnotes from the packet. You may have noticed in the packet, there were some footnotes that were just kind of, they, they were, they weren't formal legalese. Those were comments from opposing counsel when he returned the draft to us. So we removed those. We did formatting, spelling, grammar checks. There were a couple of little periods that were wandering around. We made sure those were taken out. And then I think you may have noticed that the original version, there was no exhibit A with the legal description. And what we did is I imported the legal description from the draft MDA, which was pulled from the Platts on the DZOD overlays on. So with that in mind, I think those are all the changes. Ultimately, this is a decision of particular gravity for the council and it's, it's your legislative discretion to decide weighing the, the opportunity and the limitations and the cost. But I would recommend as outside counsel, that if you are to approve this, it would be subject to the changes that we've reviewed today. Which we think will reflect what the product of hard-fought negotiation and what the developer would be willing to agree to. So. Mr. Gettens, did I leave anything out?
Nope.
All right. We've had a lot of attorneys look at this, spend a great deal of time with us and it's been a lot of, a lot of work to get it to this point. Okay? So discussion for the council.
Can I just ask Jeff a couple more questions?
Yeah.
Water is a subject that fascinates me and for so many reasons, but and it's a subject that I, I say the more I know about water, the less I know. So the aquifer. You're, you're doing, it was suggested that we need to do an engineer report or a study. In, in my mind, two. two questions. I just want to know what the process the state does to determine and how often they do it to determine how much water is in the aquifer or if they do anything to determine what's below us. For years, I've heard we're, we have a good aquifer underneath us. But I would imagine if we would do a study, it would say that our aquifer, just this is visual and this is me personally speaking, I would say that that aquifer is at an all-time low because we've been in a drought for so long. Is that a wrong assumption? Can you speak to?
I, I haven't looked at the hydrology. You know, a lot of areas, they have monitoring wells to see what's happening with the groundwater. Obviously, years ago, the, the state was concerned about the aquifer, so that's when they came in and again, they, they looked at it, they closed new appropriations. At the time, there was a minor exception even that, the since close. They put the groundwater management plan in place that limits being where water can be moved to protect aquifers because the eastern zone was more stressed than the western zone, that's why you can't move water west to east. So, I mean, the, the state does look at it. I haven't looked at the data to see what's happened with the groundwater in recent years, if it's gone up or down or stayed the same. I, I have not looked at that.
Michael, we, we have. Crystal, you and Michael, have been over the well reports we have here recently?
Yes. And I, the reality is, especially coming from area in Arizona where the aquifer is a big issue there. The first signs you start to see when your, your water aquifer is depletion is your artesian wells and springs start to go and dissipate and go away. And if that's the case here, you would see that here, I believe, driving around the wetlands and different things like that. That may have been diminished in some ways, maybe not, but I don't think that has been drastically affected here. And so that's like a first sign of doing that. And so again, the state does monitor these wells. The, the military base has numerous wells, they're monitoring that, that plume over there. So they are monitoring the depths, all of that kind of stuff. And there's been no notification, no anything, that our wells are being stressed out to the point where they need to be super concerned about depletion of the aquifer itself. And again, that's what the state manages and the water resource department does. If there was a big concern, they would have the notice out about that and probably try to shrink those shares and different things like that. And so the reality of it is, if the wells are dropping drastically, you'd start seeing fissures too that are going on here and there's no sign of that here in this aquifer.
And we did, just from a contractual standpoint, so the city's obligated to maintain its water rights, which it's going to do anyway. But we did make an exception that we're not, the city's not liable if there's things outside of its control, drought, groundwater conditions, the contamination, those sorts of things. So we did put that in the agreement that we're not promising anything that the groundwater aquifer is gonna.
But if you were to look at one of those reports, depending on how far you would go back, twenty, fifty, hundred years, a hundred years ago, the water used to run on top of the Burmester Road. Now, I do have an artesian well on that, or which, an artesian well is a one, a well that free flows, free, free flows, sorry, trying to articulate, and it does go dry every year. So we are watching that water level and maybe that's a, we're watching that water level drop drastically. And I, I'm not smart enough to know how much, if that water level affects the amount of water in the aquifer, if that makes sense. But just, that, so I appreciate, I tried to ask a lot of questions on, do we know the value of a, a study would be to us and I?
No, and I think that future projects of recharge should be in our, our analysis, especially here in the basin. If we want to make sure we continue to recharge our basin here, recharge projects should be in the horizon, we should go after federal funding to do that. Especially the recharge areas, usually are up higher up where the water initially comes down. Then every, different things affect the aquifer and the flow of the aquifer. Earthquake could adjust where flows go and different things like that. So unless you get a whole hydrologist's report and spend the money to do that, you really don't know what's going on under there. And again, that's what the state does periodically, they do do those reports. So we can go and get on their website, pull all the hydrology reports that they've done in the past while and you can do a calculation on exactly what you currently have in the aquifer and going forward again. Like, that's why, there was some concern, that's why they did cap it here. And so that is to be recognized, absolutely.
Council member, I've pulled up that language, in case you want it. Language Mr. Gettens was referring to that is in three A. The city shall not be held liable for water conditions outside of its control, including but not limited to drought, aquifer levels and groundwater.
I appreciate that. So I'll, I'll quickly finish my thoughts because I need to hear what everyone else says. But quickly thoughts, I appreciate all the, the work that's got into this. I, you, you, you make a list of pros. I do think there is some value of putting the water to use. From what I know about water, it is important to, to use it at some point. And I do fully acknowledge that municipalities are protected. This is, this is, to me, required our best efforts because it's a large amount of money income to the city. And, and I don't want to speculate on what that money could be used for, but we, we've discussed some of that. It could help us solve park issues, it could help, I think all of us talk about rec center and how much we would love that. And and, and there's been some great, I don't want to take credit for this, Rhett had some great ideas about finishing Durfee Street and Clark Street all the way through and improving them. And that would really enhance the look of our, our city. So I, I think this, this is one of probably the biggest decisions that we have to make since I've been on the council. And I, and I do recognize that there are some benefits to the city. The, the cons for me are simply the, the amount of water being requested. The, the volume. And, and the question I keep asking myself is, are we saving enough for the city for business development and other uses that we could need down the road, such as our, our parks? I think it's critical, the current condition of the aquifer, we're in a drought, I think that's, that's critical. We've answered a lot of questions on water we already had committed and, and again, business, enough water to develop businesses. And then I just, I don't know that houses recharge the aquifer. Maybe they do in some way. We've talked about recharge programs and Michael, I think you are awesome at talking about recharging or reusing or maybe you're not using the right word, water from our sewer plant and what we have going there. So that's, that's, that's where I'm at, just you, you can see pros and cons and those are the cons in, in my head. And I need to hear what everyone else says.
I, before we move on from that, what are recharge programs? Can somebody explain that to me?
Those are when you take water, gather water and try to put it back underground. So the, the surface water would go back underground to go and then refill up those aquifer things. And so when you're trying to fill up your basin or different things like that, you can, you pay money and go develop these areas where they're most strategic. You've got a hydrologist's report to determine where the best place to put those at. And then you build those structures or facilities, dams type thing. And then it basically allows the water to percolate or soak into the soil faster than other places. And so it brings that water back into the, the aquifer.
Thank you.
So, you know, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we had, we had more snow in these mountains than we'd ever had. Eighty-three, eighty-four, we flooded Cooley Street. We had more snow up in that, in those mountains that year than, than they had in eighty-three, eighty-four. And we didn't flood because we managed it. And we put that water as much as we could back into the groundwater. We were running into two, three basins, three gravel pits. The depot has a six million gallon holding pond, twice a day they'd lift it up. When it actually come through big wash out there, I mean, the, the flow was this wide, about that deep. That was it, the rest had soaked into the ground. Okay, twice a day they did that. And so we were recharging that and that made an effect. I know a guy who has a well out here east of town and his well came up. My family's well out on the Lincoln Highway. We, I measured that. And it, it was down, but during that one year, it actually ended up one foot over where we started. So. It's just one of those crazy things that I do. But you know, we, by recharging that, by using the water that's coming down to us, putting it back into the ground, we were able to, to put it back into the, you know, below the surface anyway. I don't know where, how far, you know, I wish I did, so.
I had, I had one last con and I can't, this is, this has been on my mind a lot. And the con is the precedence this sets to provide water to other builder developers in the city. I, I worry about that. I, I feel that there are other developers that need water too and what precedents or precedents are we setting? That's my last con. Sorry, I couldn't read my writing at the end.
Heidi, you got more?
Uh, just like, I'm gonna go off of that statement that Jeff just made. Is there anything in the documents that makes that less of an issue of not having to feel obligated legally to sell or to transfer to other developers? What, what, is there any language in here that addresses the question that Jeff just brought up?
So, the, the closest is the option provision that does provide some flexibility up to a certain point in the number of acre feet to incentivize, you know, do small-scale projects. That was very important to the city manager. We have a system for fees in lieu of one or two homes or something like that. Somebody who doesn't have the institutional wherewithal to go into the water market, wanted to protect that. And then there's, there's a little bit of room built in for the purposes of existing development and future development. That said, this agreement, to, just to be candid, is structured in terms of providing the certainty to the developer that certain water will be available to them so that they can proceed with desert development and build the public infrastructure and the necessary project improvements to bring that community to fruition. And so it's, it's sort of like a balancing line in terms of we can't have anything in this agreement that prevents another developer to come to us, of course. And other developers may, may come to the city at some point and ask for similar arrangements. And the council may have to explain, well, there were unique aspects to this particular development in terms of scope and scale and public infrastructure that justified this one in a way that it might not for thirty-two home subdivision.
Thank you. Is it my turn, I guess? Okay. I appreciate Jeff's list of pros and cons. I, I think we can all agree on those. One of the things I, I've been thinking about extensively over the last few days about this is it seems to me like the developer has obviously put in a lot of effort into this development. They have spent a considerable amount of money even up to this point in getting to where we are now with the development being approved. So they're going to find water. They're, whether it is through this agreement or they are finding waters through one of these other places that have been banked, that they're going to find the water for the project to make this successful for them. And so I've thought a lot about that and the fact is, the water is still going to be coming out of the ground, just like it is if they, they found the water through, they utilize some, one of these other sources. I mean, I could list some people in town who maybe have high water num, you know, high numbers of water shares that they would have available to sell. Obviously, I'm not going to, to do that, but they're obviously those individuals or groups that have those big shares of water. And they, so this developer could obviously go get those from those other sources and they're still going to be drilling the, they're still going to be pulling the water out of the ground in that same area. It's, everybody's water is going to still, like, they're still using the water that's here in Grantsville. However, if they go and find it from another developer, it's going to be at the benefit of those very few people who ha, are big high-water owners. And so maybe two, three, four investors, developers or whatever, individuals that have all this water available that's maybe banked in the city, they are obviously going to benefit very much financially by letting him utilize their water shares. So the water's still gonna be, being taken from the ground. It's still going to be used, whichever, whatever means he ends up using to get the water. To me, the only benefit to this is if we do this agreement, then the items that Jeff mentioned that could be pros as far as things that we could do to benefit the city would be a benefit to all of the city. Things that would be a benefit to all of us, whether it's rec centers, whether it's more this, that, whatever we want to say, improvements to the city. He's still going to get the water. So this to me makes sense only in the terms of the fact that everyone in Grantsville will benefit it rather than just a few high-water owners. That he will have to obviously pay the, the large sum of money that we're talking about. So if, am I wrong about that? Does anybody want to correct any statement of that? Because if you have something, I'd love to hear it.
I think, I think I can't speak for Mr. Johnson or his intention or his plan. Maybe perhaps Mr. Gettens could speak to water being a finite resource. I think that where the rubber really hits the mouth road is, we've been asked to take on some risk in terms of committing to how much water we have. And we get an opportunity to utilize that water so long as we can meet those obligations and those commitments. And then at the end of the day, if everything plays out as it should, those funds can be used to benefit the broader public and we're utilizing a city resource to do it. Now, there might be some economics questions I am not qualified to answer because I'm a history major about, about doing it later, doing it now. But I, 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 I think those are the variables at play, council member, if that's helpful.
Thank you.
No, I, I appreciate the comments, the discussion. I know there's been a lot of that. I, I too have spent more time in water than I probably, you know, want to be. I, I've read through some of the USGS studies, learning recharge rates. And I know there's been studies in this area. Not very many studies, but there has been some in the Twilla Valley and, and you can read up on those and get familiar with those. I've spent some time having conversations with others in the valley who have spent a good deal of time in water. So stands very park improvement district being one of those. And spent some time getting information on wells and, 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 and other things. So I think, I guess where I'm going with this comment is there is paper water and then there is wet water and, and those two, as Heidi mentioned, one way or the other, will be accessed in this case. I think with all of that being said and what we've gone over and reading through the agreement, this is a big decision and I, I, I think from my perspective, a big decision requires, you know, time and effort into it to ensure it's the correct decision. And so I think it requires the correct amount of time in that process to. In that process to ensure it's done correctly, so I may have said that word correct more than once there. But I feel, I feel that uh. This is something that requires additional time to review. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Let's, looking at that, I agree with what's what's said with by all three of you, um. Some of the things that, and I appreciate Jeff, thank you for articulating the question I was trying to ask. Because I was like, aquifer, that was the word I wanted, thank you, but um. Because. You know, ultimately, we're trying to decide, do? The benefits outweigh the risks, right? Like. And in the end, because anything we do has risks. And and. And and I I agree, you know, like Heidi's kind of laid out the benefits. Um. Because we're talking about. Um, so it's seven. Seven hundred and thirty three point thirty three acre feet for the first one. And according to the schedule, that would be paid by the end of this year, right?
It's it's somewhat flexible in terms of, uh, they, it could be paid by the end of this year, it could be paid. A little bit later on, it's just the interest rate goes up depending on when it's called.
Okay. And so, um, and that's at, is that still at the twenty five thousand?
It would. Each year it goes up two point five percent, and so twenty five thousand would be the first year, and that would go up.
So, just if he. If he. Paid this by the end of the year, right? And that's twenty five thousand, so that's. Is, and tell me if this is right, like eighteen million, three hundred and thirty three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Does that sound?
This is my nightmare, performing math on the fly, but I I'd be happy.
You know what? They're the only major that's worse than a history major is an English major, and that's what I am.
That's a much better major.
Like, um, so math is not my forte, but that sounds about right, right? So what Heidi's saying is. And I'm making sure I understand, and I, and I think I agree, is that. There are people that have. These, these water. Rights available. And so the benefit would be, and it, and like you said, it goes up. Um, the longer it takes, um. But. The risks and. Jeff, you did a really good job outlining those, um. Because I I do, I I worry. Whether or not we can meet. These needs and still meet our needs as as a city. Um, and my concerns too. Is that I I don't feel like Grantsville City has a robust. Water plan. We just added some things to our general plan, which I think is a step in the right direction. And then you said you are working on the forty. Year plan.
Prepared by engineers, but yes.
Yeah, um, and so. I I feel like I would. I would feel more confident having those things in place and kind of what you are saying, Heidi. I I would feel more confident having an ordinance in place saying. We. You know, if other developers come to us, we have like a a cap where we say. We're only going to, like, we're always gonna have this much water. You know. Un-unassigned, is that what the word was? Or?
Uncommitted.
Uncommitted, that's word, um. I, I would feel better about it having. An idea of what we want, a vision, I guess, for our water. You know, right now, we're working on transportation plans so that we can make good decisions about transportation. And I I think it would be nice to have a very strong. Water plan and and we are, we are, we've got, you know. Um, water wise scaping. Requirements or options that we have for developers, we've got a lot of things, but I think there's a lot more that we could do. And I agree with Jake on that, that. I would feel more comfortable with a little more time to. To really get those things into place and to make sure that. Um, we're making a decision and I would, I would feel better. Maybe just being committed to that first seven hundred and thirty three. And and then. In a future time saying, okay, now let's look where, how are we looking seven years from now? Okay, yes, we're ready, or whatever the timeframe is. I I just even, and I know we took that. That third one off or made it optional, which I think is good, but. It is a big commitment, like. I don't know, I. I dated my husband for a year before I was ready for that commitment, and so I I don't know. A few weeks, I'm ready for committing the city to something like this just yet. So.
Um, I just have some questions on. Um, really Article seven in the uh, Water Service Agreement. Titled indemnification, if you could just maybe elaborate a little bit of the protections that are. That are within that article for the city. And also protections that are. Page six. Go back.
Uh, paragraph seven might be an easier way to find it.
Oh, wow, yeah. Article seven is what I call it. Paragraph seven is fine as well.
I think it's very good language, but yeah, just talk about it. Yeah, so, um, this is a provision that. We can't always anticipate whether. Another developer would bring suit and challenge perhaps the legality of the obligations, make arguments, I don't. I don't want to feed them their arguments, so I'll, I'll, I'll be just general in terms of speaking about it. But basically, what this provision is designed to do is. If somebody who's not a party to the agreement steps in and tries to challenge this agreement. Ordinarily. They might bring the city into that lawsuit. And the city's. Offering this agreement, you know, it it receives something in exchange, but it's, it's doing so to get the benefit of the bargain and. It doesn't want to necessarily. Expend tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars defending against a challenge, so. What this is doing is when it says the developer will indemnify and defend the city. The developer would, the city would probably still be a part of the suit, but the developer would step in. To hiring the attorneys that they think can best defend this agreement. And protecting against it, and then the indemnification language is if the city's incurring their legal costs, usually when you have indemnification. They they pay those costs on behalf of the city. And so I think a good example of this might be. The North Parcel litigation. We didn't have a formal, not the North Parcel litigation, the Six Mile Ranch litigation. Um, where the city. Was the one who was sued. But may not necessarily, it may have had outside counsel. A contrasting example would be the Skywalk annexation litigation. Where nobody's indemnifying the city, but the other party intervened to protect its perceived interests in the annexation. So this is designed to prevent a Skywalk type situation. Where you're still paying some schmuck like me to be a part of the litigation. Um, I I and uh, uh, the developer has to put, you know, their. Their money where their mouth is in terms of defending the agreement. Did I address your questions, council member?
Yeah.
My apologies about calling myself a schmuck, but yeah, you know, so.
Very good, um, I guess my next question, and and Mr. Gittens may be able to answer it. I think it's been inferred uh, multiple times, but. Out of the, let's see. Ten thousand, two hundred and eighty six. Shares of uh, acre feet of water that Grantsville City has either dedicated, banked, or. You know, initially given by the the state of Utah to us. Um. Uh, is there any way that we can know? How many shares of water are specifically just banked with the city and that have not been, they're uncommitted? That have, that have not been committed to any sort of development?
So banked with the city, so the way, just let me give a little background to make sure we're all on the same page, so when. When water is banked with the city. Water rights are given to the city, the city issues credits that can then be turned in, dedicated, kind of, is again, similar process to what's being proposed here.
Yes.
Um. So for each time there's a, a bank. Then there's a credit log again, like in this one. Uh, so let's say a developer banks a hundred acre feet that they're gonna use for several phases of their development. Uh, and then they do phase one, they will fill out paperwork with the city that says, okay, you know. You said we need twenty acre feet for phase one, so we are going to dedicate twenty acre feet to phase one. And it, uh, once that's filed, then those credits are tied to that property, right? And now they only have eighty acre feet of credits to use, so. Um. That can be done, what you would have to do, so the the city recorder is the one that keeps these credit logs, you have to go through the credit logs and see. How much was banked and how much has been allocated to developments and therefore how much is left, so it could be done, just required going through each of those. Um, banking logs.
Kind of a moving target too. The more the development goes up, the more they're drawing down those credits.
You've been, you've been with us now for fifteen years, so twenty ten is about when you started representing us. And the the previous administration, um, prior to to Mayor Kritzlo. I I I'm aware that um. Their um, take on on some of this was to, when water was available, that the city would go out and purchase those, those water shares. Um, those acre feet of water, and I'll just use one. Um, for example, because it's, it's tied to to my family. So twenty twelve, Shirley Worthington um, sold the city ten acre feet of water. And she was paid, she's ninety years old, she's actually been in the hospital last, last few days and. I uh, I talked with her about this specifically and asked her if she had banked those shares with the city or if she'd been paid. And she said that she'd been paid directly from the city for those ten acre feet of water. So I guess what what I'm getting at is, um, and there are. Um, wh- what we have um, here in front of us, we have two pages of of different transactions of. Of individuals that have acre feet of water. Um. That they've either sold or banked to the city. And I I've asked this question before and haven't really got the, the. The answer that I'm looking for, but really more detail in regards to. What the city has purchased and has not been committed. Because I I think that there are, there may be some shares during that time. From twenty. Twenty ten to to twenty twenty two. That the city actually invested in water. And never really committed that to specific um, developments.
Okay.
And and the other thing is. It's more specifically, the amount of water in those ten thousand, two hundred and fifty eight shares. Um, that are banked. By individuals within our community, or maybe even individuals without our community that have banked waters, water, acre feet of water shares. With the city that they have not been dedicated, they're uncommitted, and that are available to purchase for. Um. I'm not available to purchase, but those credits are available. Um, from those owners to a developer. That make sense?
Okay, uh, let me take the first one, I may have to come back on the second one.
Yeah, no problem.
Um, yeah, so as far as I'm aware. Whenever the city was buying water, it was buying it with fee in lieu or impact fee money.
Yeah.
So again, that's money that was given. Because rather than giving water, they gave money, so the water that was bought was not necessarily for. Future growth, it was water that was being bought with impact money to offset. These small, you know, onesies and twosies. Of homes that were being built. I believe Shirley Worthington's water was in that category, I think that's one, and the way this generally worked is the city would, you know. Gather impact fee money for a couple of years and then go out to the, basically put out a notice to bid effectively and say, look, we've got. Twenty five thousand dollars to spend. What water do do people have they want to sell to us, right? And then people would offer their water and what their price would be, and the city would look at those and figure out which was the best water based on the price and other factors. And purchase the water, so. I'm not personally aware of any times where the city just went and bought water. Without impact fee money just for, you know, ju- using general funds just to buy water for the future.
Okay.
Maybe it happened and I'm not aware of it, but I'm, I I'm not aware of any.
I will talk soon.
Good. Well, you would be the person that would know, I would imagine. Because you've been here with us for fifteen years.
Yeah, because usually when they, whenever they bought water, then again, they would have me look at it and go through the process of. Getting a change application, even when they bought water. Uh, in that process with the fee in lieu money, they still made people go through the process of. Getting the change application approved, getting the title insurance, that sort of stuff to make sure, again, the city was buying good water.
Great.
Now, the second point, tell me again what you're, the the water that's been banked.
Banked, but uncommitted.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um. Again, you could go through the credit logs and figure those out. What I don't know if you can figure out is, is that water quote unquote available for others, right? Because again, a lot of developers have banked water for use, to use for their own development, so they're not gonna sell it. No matter what the price, because then they can't do their own developments. Looking through and figuring out who has water that's banked that they're willing to sell versus not willing to sell, I'm not sure how you'd make that. That determination. You could figure out what's uncommitted, but I don't think you could figure out what's. Earmarked in the developer's mind for projects that just haven't taken off yet.
But it is true that it's not all developers, it's, it's also individual. Trusts and owners and LLCs. And livestock companies and farms.
Yeah, there's been a wide variety of people that have banked water.
Yeah, you should use that developer, talk that 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 uh, that term kind of broadly, but.
Yeah, I I'm saying that's usually the, the most common scenario, that's not the only ones, like you said, there's other folks who have. You know, for one reason or another have water that they couldn't use and decide the best use of it was to bank with the city. And sell the credits to developers.
So I guess maybe this isn't a question for you, maybe it's more a question for Michael, and you may not know this. But, um, is it possible for us to know exactly what? What that looks like?
What's uncommitted and not, I think there is a possibility, I I think with uh.
I would hope so.
Brady not being here, uh, she would have known that and that would have been presented tonight. Uh, but we do have that data that we're gonna go sort through. And with the new recorder starting on the twelfth, that is gonna be one of her uh, first tasks to do is to go sort through that, get an exact accounting of. The water credits that are currently available, they're uncommitted, they may be held by developers or. Homeowners or farmers or different people like that that haven't been dedicated specifically to a specific project there, because every project has to have it recorded and committed to the city. That then it transfers that. That ownership from them to the city, so I think that's an easy way to track that is to reverse track. What one hasn't been dedicated to a specific.
Yeah, the city again has credit logs for each of the, each time water is banked.
Great.
So it's just a matter of going through each of those, which, again, I I don't know how numbers of how many credit logs there are, but.
May I make a comment on impact fees briefly?
Sure.
And so I pulled up the first slide of Mr. Gittens' analysis and I've had the unlucky fortune to be part of a very big impact fee case and. Developed some knowledge of impact, the Impact Fee Act. And one, one question that arises with impact fees is the statute very strictly regulates when you can collect those and the process you have to go through in terms of collecting them. And what they can be sent, spent for, so just for the benefit of the public, I want it very clear. When Mr. Gittens was doing rights acquired from dedications, water banking, or purchases with impact fee funds. And he calculated that figure of five thousand, five, seven hundred and seventy five, and he, he's saying it's not included in his analysis. He's subtracting that out. So to get to that four thousand, five hundred and eleven figure, so when we're talking about things that have been banked. Or impact fee fund acquired water, that's not what we had. Anticipated or envisioned using, that's why Mr. Gittens conducted his analysis. Anticipated or envisioned using, that's why Mr. Gittens conducted his analysis to get to that end number. And so while I think that question is critical and water banking. Having that audit um, is is really, really important. I I will also say we were trying to build in the uncertainty in terms of the analysis to get at a number that was conservative and safe. So.
And I appreciate that.
And and if there was water that was bought. Again, without impact fee money that was just bought for the city's future use. Then we'd have to move which category it's in, but I again, I'm not aware, nobody's told me of those, I don't recall any that are for that category.
It would be nice to know if there are, if if that is the case.
Yeah.
One way or the other.
Thanks for letting me.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks for letting me address that, I just wouldn't want a member of the public to think I paid an impact fee and it's being used for this, because our intention is that it's not, so.
My my last comment slash question has to do with funds specifically. Um, i- if if we were to approve this, whether this evening or or in another meeting or at another time. Um, specifically the funds that the city would receive. Um, from from this water credit agreement. Those funds would go where? And how can those funds be allocated elsewhere and what's the process behind that? So I'll uh. Sherry's not here.
Yeah, no, so.
You like, you like me.
I'll take that. Um, so uh, currently with the funds being in the water credits that will go into our water account, our uh, account there, and so. There is a process and Grantsville has done it in the past where you can take it out of the franchise. Fund and then move it into a, the general fund access or um. Project funds, and so that's the process that would have to occur here is because these water. Credits and the purchase of this would go there, so every every time they did a tranche payment, we would have to go through that process, and so. There is a process to that, so you would. Analyze what's in those, that water fund, if it's in excess, which it would be bringing this much money in there that you're not going to use that year, then you would. Notice to the public that you're moving those funds, have public input and then have them. Have a meeting about it and then have the council determine at that point whether they move those funds to the other fund, so that would be access to the general. Use for uh, capital improvement projects or other projects like that.
The city did consult with its its accounting auditor to understand that process. Um, with Shelley's assistance, um, and that process is set forth in state statute, so. Um, it's just a state statutory requirement and we would notice it and go through it and it's fairly discretionary.
Um, I just one last comment and we can go this direction if we want to or 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 not, but I think it would be. Important to allow Mr. Johnson to to make some comments if he'd like to in regards to this, you know, prior to us. Um, proceeding any further, so.
It's a good idea, right? Joe?
Well, first, thanks for your consideration of this topic tonight, um. As has been stated previously, um. We're gonna go obtain water for this development. And the reason we marched down this path, I think Heidi said it well. We can either write a check to an individual. Out there in the community who can solely benefit from this. Or we can write a check to the city for water credits. That the whole community can benefit, a- and so. Being a developer, the where we want to improve the community, you know, our hope is that this money can go to the improvement of the community, so. Any questions that you have for me?
I'll just um, I'll just go back to something that Jolene said just a moment ago. And we we have this this agreement and and it's obviously not ironclad because we 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 have lots of adjustments and changes and. And verbiage. What would be your thoughts if if we were to take her approach and we were to back out? That um, just the 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 second tranche of the seven thirty three. And just make the initial one and then make a second tranche optional.
Yeah, I I I think that's something we we could be open to, uh, we would rather not, obviously, we we have a lot of vested interest in in doing this. For the minimum two tranches, I think if we were to do that, we'd probably need to adjust the amount we take in the first take. Because it doesn't factor in all the commercial property that we need and we'd need that for for our bonding. And to be able to move forward with with other portions of our development that we we wouldn't anticipate, we wouldn't have that guarantee, which would affect the issuance of bonds on this first takedown.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
I do wanna. I started out with this thing is that the percentage of your home valuation. Over the last fifteen years, whatever, has gone down. Even though the valuation of your home is up, which makes it look like your taxes have gone up, but the percentages of our Grantsville portion. Is gone down every year, okay, because that's part of the certified tax rate that the. That the state and the county give to us, and like I says, we're the third lowest municipality in the county as far as our rate. Uh, there's just a few ways that the city gets money, that can make money out of this. Uh, we can make property taxes, get your money out of that, sales tax. Uh, fees, or we can go out and get grants, okay? And. Nobody wants your property taxes go up any more than, you know, than they are right now at this point. We're trying to. Get more sales tax coming in by being more friendly to. Businesses that want to come to Grantsville. And we have chased fees down all the time, the chief is constantly. Doing that to make sure that things are taken care of, uh, the Matthews Lane, for instance, uh, there was about a million one. Worth of. Grants uh. For that particular project. And uh, you know, we're we're hoping that we can pay all of these things off, but. And we have been given, I mean, I don't know how many people, we want, we want these parks, we want these amenities, we want these sidewalks. Well, the only way to make that happen. Is either to to raise the property taxes, get more sales tax in here. Or raise fees. Or get some grants, and we're trying on all of those things, we're trying to do that by keeping the property taxes low. And that's, that's been a very huge priority to me for four years now, so. You know, if we're gonna have an opportunity to. Get those things that the people are demanding. Uh, that we do. Uh, because our, we're growing and we're, well, we outgrew what we already had. And I keep telling people, you know, in nineteen seventy four, Grantsville was pretty dang cool. Okay? And none of you guys remember that, okay, cause you're not old enough to do that. But uh, uh. Things have grown a little and then they have just gone a little crazy. Uh, so.
Can I just add, um, sorry, like going along with that, um, because. Really, we have not raised taxes, but. The cost of things are going up, so we are trying to be creative in finding funding. Um, but. I wonder if it would help also if we had a more defined plan of what we would do with these funds. For the public, because really as a governing body. Our our first priority is infrastructure. Making sure that people have. The infrastructure needs, that's that's our number one job, right? Like to make sure that we're protecting. The the basic. Needs of.
Folks, it's public safety first.
Well, that I was gonna say, I I count.
One A, one sub B, maybe?
Yeah, I count, I count, I count public safety under infrastructure, so I I guess you can delineate those, and so that's, I'm. Like my question, because I I'm not. An accounting or. Yeah, I'm not a math person, but would you be able to? Because I I would say that a smart thing would be to sit a, set a big portion of that. Into an account and accrue that interest, right? Like that would be a smart thing to do, could you use? The interest to help. Get us another police officer, could you use like, I I'd want to have like a better, because you don't want to use something like. A one-time payment, we've seen other entities do that and get in trouble where they took. A one-time payment to pay something that happens every year that you pay a salary, you can't pay a salary for, through money that's not.
And and and.
Growing too.
Councilwoman, the council will be the guiding direction in this matter, if if.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so the plan that this council comes up with. Is going to be the ones who decides where that goes.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're gonna have a plan, you know, they'll invest this much or they won't invest this, they'll moved into, you know, the parks that they want to do, or the roads or sidewalks. But that will be completely up to. The people sitting at this table.
Yeah, I understand that completely, what I'm saying is it might help for the public. And, you know, if we're looking at this is to kind of have a, this is kind of what we're thinking with this, because. You know, like. I- it seems like a lot, but it's gonna go like that too. Once you start, I mean, eighteen million, it used to be like, you'd say, oh, if I were a millionaire, I would do this, now if I were a millionaire, like. That would last me. A month, maybe, with the economy, so I'm just saying it would help maybe as a governing body to. Present, if you decide to go with something like this, to have a more definitive idea of what you would do with that money, is what I'm saying. To be accountable of what would we do with that money, because. I agree, like, and I would love to see it go to. A rec center or parks, I would love to see someone go to that veterans park, you know, um, but. I would say, you know, we need to define what are the priorities, where would this money go to? Um, that would best benefit our city in the long run.
And and the the council who's gonna make those decisions, if you guys vote to do this. Are gonna have to be wise and be watched over and and the public can have a lot of say over those type of things, however they want to manage it. I just won't be sitting here when you do it. Okay?
Mayor? Can I make an additional comment? Um. One of the reasons we've, we. This is a unique opportunity, you know, I kind of say this is a once in a generation. Type of opportunity, a a question was brought up, does this set a precedence for other developers? I would say yes, if another developer is willing to come in. And write the ch- the city a check for eighteen million dollars. And then have a plan in place, you know, in the next few years to make that a total of roughly sixty six million dollars. I would say the city should jump on that every single time. Um, because to the point being made, it 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 it's not raising anyone's taxes, it's not raising anyone's impact fees, it's money coming to the city. Monetizing an asset the city is sitting on right now that's doing no good to the city. And so i- in our opinion, and in my opinion, as a as a resident as well. This is a once in a generation opportunity. And it's an opportunity that there, unfortunately, because of the way the market is, there are certain windows to hit that opportunity. We have things queued up and and ready to go. Uh, we've been working on this for for many months with our bond councils and and things, and so this is a. Uh, a window of an opportunity that doesn't come along every day, so I just wanted to add that context as well.
Absolutely, you know, there was a lot of things flying around social media. Over the last few weeks, month, whatever, uh, one was spoken here about five thousand acre feet, and it's not. Uh, that the council was uh, getting something out of this, they're not. Okay, nobody is, except for the city, if this happens, if you guys vote to do this.
Well, but mainly more specifically, nobody but the citizens.
The citizens.
I mean, that that's, that's our job is to serve the citizens, right?
That's exactly right.
So, I mean, and and that's the quandary, right?
We we. Need a million and a half or plus for a new ladder truck, we need, oh, there's lots of needs and that way to. Right at this point, if we're gonna keep those, our sales tax low. Our property tax low, this is an opportunity if you guys choose to do it, okay? So. Anyway. With that said. I need a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion, we. Table consideration of resolution twenty twenty five eighty one approving master water service agreement for desert. Development.
We have a motion to table. Is there a second?
I second that.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Do we need to define? The. How long we're tabling it or anything like that?
Yeah, but let's.
Or just table it?
Uh, I'm, I'm, the motion to table, just be a motion to table. Brought back on the agenda. At a later day, just put that request with me.
Okay. I was just wondering.
I um, I can go into maybe some specifics on that, other than.
You guys can figure that one out, okay?
Yeah, I I, there's, there's removal of the language of the MDA and eh, this could just be part of that. I didn't feel like there was a need to modify this agreement to remove that agreement. If they're gonna come together anyways, so.
Okay. So what you're asking for then, Jake, is that you want just the MDA and this to be.
Reflected in each other. At the end.
Okay, so, okay.
So allow that process to to go through that approval and then. Just to follow suit.
Okay. Okay, we had a motion and a second. All in favor for tabling.
Aye.
Aye.
Is that the vote one way or the other?
You didn't say, you just said all those in favor.
Oh, excuse me.
Specifically.
You're correct.
Yeah. Yeah, Robert's Rules of Order.
Yes, we are.
Not that we really follow that, but.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. To table. Those in favor of tabling.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Do a roll call vote. Councilman Williams. In favor?
Can I just ask this question? So. In this motion to table, are you wanting them to bring this back with the MDA at our next meeting, is that what you're asking for?
I prefer them to be together.
So that's mine.
Okay.
So that, that's not possible, because the MDA needs to go through planning and zoning. The MDA needs to run through that process and then it would need to be properly noticed. The soonest that we could um, see the approval of it, the MDA and this particular item would be the first uh, meeting in December. If the MDA was approved by the planning and zoning, or whether it was uh, denied as well, so, either way.
Okay, so just so I understand the timing of things. Why was, if it had been approved last night?
It wouldn't have been able to be approved tonight. That's the, that's the crux, right?
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
It would have to wait until.
It would have to wait until.
Then nineteen.
It got noticed.
Yeah. So. Really. Yeah, so, really, I'll just say this, the, uh, the agenda items should have been. For discussion for the MDA, not for consideration.
Last night or tonight?
Both.
Okay.
But tonight, it definitely should have been discussion. Regardless of whether pass failed or tabled yesterday, yesterday it should have been discussion as well.
Then I'm gonna say nay.
Who else want to change your votes?
So, can I just clarify your, your name, the tabling of it?
Yes.
Okay, repeat your vote, Jeff.
I'm in favor.
Of tabling, okay.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the votes, we're gonna table this, you guys put it together and figure this one out again, okay? Okay. Motion carries, the motion carries to table.
Alright, one, two.
Okay. Alright. Like to take, before we do council reports, I'd like to take a few minutes to.
You're too old.
I am too old. I'm very patient.
It's gonna break?
Break.
Five minute break. Didn't you say five minute break?
Yep, five minute break.
Nine fifty-five, huh?
Rush out, just get to the fun part.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Trey. Oh, and it, cause it was kind of.
There's a couple there.
That's what.
Sparkling.
But you essentially. And shared with them a little bit of our situation. So, I mean, yeah, they're just. We're, we're in a much better position than a lot of cities. We're probably.
You know, a lot of cities shouldn't even have this discussion as a possibility.
Absolutely.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay. Soon as Gina gets back, we'll fire her up here.
I know, but not.
Yeah, I get it.
Not in the public.
It's okay, I mean, I might have said nay, you never know, I might have said nay if who voted, I mean. You don't know, right?
It's just a puzzle, conundrum.
Alright, favorite part of the meeting?
Stuff.
Yeah. Do we have a closed session tonight?
Yeah, I need to, one personnel issue we can discuss.
So, this is. Like, oh, can somebody clarify to me what this list is?
That's the one or.
That's it.
That's fit, that's your ten thousand.
Right, okay, so.
Heidi, what I ask for clarification with that document is ex- exactly what we need to see.
Yeah.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to understand exactly.
Okay. Ready, Gina?
Um, we don't have attorney, marriage, or anything.
That'll be fine. We're just doing council reports, so. Okay. Council reports. Alright, Councilman Williams.
Uh, we had a mosquito amendment meeting last night and it was a long one because they approved the budget. Um, but I think it was, um. I've stated this before, I think we're pretty lucky to have that resource and they really catered us, I think, so. It was quite interesting to go through the budget, um, and I think that we've got good people. Over that, that area, um. So, the budget was approved, um. I, I was just, I was shocked that there's still mosquito south, but they're not biting right now. I would tell you the flies are biting worse than a mosquito right now, so I mean, it's just, yeah, it's just an interesting. Kind of conversation, but it's in place, going well and I, it's a lucky resource we have, so, that's all I have.
Right, Councilwoman?
Um, finished planting the last pots with the tulips for the spring yesterday. Grateful for the help that I received from members of the public and my family as well, and, um. I think that's everything. Keep it short tonight.
Councilman. I'll go in line with keeping it short as well, um, I just wanted to give a shout out to our police department for the trunk or treat. And that activity was a fantastic event and I thank you for, for doing that. I have a lot of positive on that, uh, event specifically, so thank you for that. I don't have any updates regarding the school district, but I do have an update on the veterans part. Um, we've gone through a redesign on that to resize that, to get it down within. Trying to get that within a better budget range for the work that needs to be performed there with the same design. So, that has gone back to the committee and they've reviewed it and it's been approved and so. It will, uh, we're in, we're in the process of having it architecturally redrawn. And, once we get those drawings back, we should be able to issue that back out to public for bid, so. That's all I have, okay, Councilwoman?
Um, and going off of that, like, I appreciate the city for starting the process of.
I was gonna ju- I just.
Sorry. Uh, starting that process, like, we, the, the committees are really excited to see some efforts starting to be made and, um. Like that, that, it, it's just, it's nice to have a visual of, like, things that are happening.
What's the time, sorry, Jolene, what's the timeframe on having that redrawn, do you know?
A couple of weeks.
Oh, couple, did you say that and I missed it?
No, no, I didn't, but a couple of weeks to have it and then. We should be able, the, the anticipation is to get it out for bid and then look to the spring for. Initiation on.
Yeah.
Doing the first phase.
Um, yeah.
If we can get the first phase with the budget, so.
Um, and then Veterans Day. Breakfast and program, that's the Saturday, nine AM, I know. Um, some people will be out of country, that's okay, but, um, but I appreciate council members who. Can be there to help, um, and yeah, it's gonna be a lot of fun, we got a great program. Like, some good cooks come in, so it'll be good and. Um, all the proceeds from the Veterans Eat Free, all the proceeds from. That and the silent auction will go towards the Veterans Memorial Park. Um, and there is. I, I think, I just heard, I think we've got fourteen quilts that were, have been donated by different people. That are going to be given to veterans at the event, so I think that's pretty cool, like, we've just had a lot of support from the community, so it's awesome. Um, and then, uh, youth council, they've started their, uh. Drive for the Festival of Trees, they're gonna do that again, the theme this year is Once Upon a Pine. So it's like kind of a book theme, um, but anyway, eh, they're really creative, it's gonna be really cool and, um. I think they're also planning on helping again with the Festival of Reeds that's happening at, um. At the old Grantsville Church Theater, um, and so there's, I, I've got it on social media, maybe I'll. Say about getting it on the city website and stuff of, like, our Amazon wishlist and. How people can be a part of that, um, and they're also doing a book drive along with their Festival of Trees. So that you, we're gonna donate books to our local elementary schools, the Children's Justice Center and Primary Children's. Along with our Christmas tree, we'll have some books around it also, um, and then. At Chamber of Commerce this morning, uh, one of the things. That I just wanted to bring from that is their Santa Parade is on the twenty-ninth also, but it's at two o'clock. So we'll be able to do our light parade and that, I think it would be really good for. Grantsville City to have something in this, in the Santa Parade in twelfth, just because. You know, just building relationships, it's hosted by the Chamber of Commerce and, um. And they're, they're always inviting Grantsville to be a part of it, so that would be a good thing to do.
The Miss Grantsville Girls went last year, participated with them, so.
And, I mean, other Grantsville City people, like. So, um, I think that's all I've got. Is that all I said this morning?
Believe so.
Okay, well, I'm just, and also I was going to say congratulations to you guys for moving on. Like, I, I think we're going in a good direction and good luck to you. I, I will not purchase a pitchfork in January, like.
Just a torch.
That, that is my promise. I have not put that on my Santa list to get a pitchfork.
Alright, rep.
Um, library board, uh, meets tomorrow, so I'll have something to report next meeting. Um, HPC Historic Preservation Committee, um, thank you for appointing the two individuals to fill the, the two vacant seats that we have. Um, we'll be ma- meeting here in the next, uh, this next week. Um, in regards to planning and zoning, yesterday, there's a couple of things. Yesterday, we had a, a fairly, I would say a fairly lively discussion in regards to chapter seven. And just conditional use permits and the authority and procedure behind that. Coupled with that is, um, coming up, I, 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 I did reach out to each one of you to see if you would attend a work meeting. On November eighteenth at, um, six PM, I believe it's at six PM. Um, and that will be on conditional use permits and how we can do a better job of writing under our code. Um, those, I mean, it's, it's been a sticking issue with us, I mean, honestly, since day one that we got in, right? And we're still seeing, um, that rear its ugly head on multiple fronts and, and it can be awfully frustrating for. For us as, as council members and for the planning and zoning individuals that, that volunteer their time for that and then. And then also for the citizens, so I thi- think we need to get a better handle on that, so. The state ombudsman, um, will be here to, uh, give us some training. Maybe give us a little bit of direction and a little better understanding, I think that's, that'll be, that'll be healthy. There's some great things we've done in regards to conditional use permits, um, I think we'd all agree on that. But it's still, it still comes up quite often, so, um, it's something we need to tackle. That is all I have.
December seventeenth. At eleven o'clock, right, or eleven thirty, Gina, for the Christmas. Eleven thirty.
I think eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty, you're invited to that, we're gonna have it down to the, uh, uh, church again, the old First Ward Church. And we'll cater it and, uh, we'll send a list of things, where there's a few things that we'd like to, uh. To give you guys as far as participating with us and. Uh, it's, I like that down there because it's, you know, we get a lot of. Of participation from the employees, okay? And that's what I think is, is nice about that, the light parade is on the twenty-ninth. Um, you guys come participate, try not to freeze Heidi's.
It's cold, folks, so don't go unprepared.
I got some heaters this year, we're gonna put in there, so, uh, that was fun and, uh, participate on those type of things. I just wanna congratulate everyone as part of being. It is tough to be, put your name in the hat to be. On a city council or a mayor or anything, because, you know, everybody's taking pot shots at you and you just kinda have to just. Let it fly by and, I mean, there's a lot of stupid things that are said and, uh. Uh, you know, you just have to let it roll off your back a little bit, but I appreciate each one of you for putting. Up with that air, you know, to, to get to this point, so thank you so much. And that's all I have, but we do need to go in a closed session for, uh, personnel.
I make a motion, we go into a closed session.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Carries.
July night, come out and cook again, Saturday, I will be there.
I was hoping you were gonna come.